Council is back in session, and Councilman Carlson, I think we were going to proceed with number nine, if your person is here. I'm sorry, roll call, please pardon me, go ahead.
Dingfelder, Gooz, Maniscalco, Citro, Miranda, Carlson, Vieira.
Here, and before again, Councilman Miranda, I believe is going to be out because of a calendar conflict, so let's begin with item nine. Councilman Carlson, if you wanted, do you want to say anything before, sir?
Yeah, thank you, Professor Sabia couldn't make it, but Brian Cook was one that was going to present with her, and so I'll let him explain who he is and what he's presenting.
Is it queued up? I don't know what I'm doing. Number nine?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, please.
You gotta, you gotta do more commendations.
Well, while they're queuing up, yeah, sorry I missed this morning. It's been a big day, I was actually at the BOCC this morning reporting, this is actually a county project, but obviously City of Tampa has a great lot to do with what's going on in terms of perils of flood, flood resiliency within the county, so like Councilman Carlson was saying, Taryn Sabia, she's a director of the Florida Center?
And if I may, I'm sorry, could you state your name?
Yeah, I'm Brian Cook.
And that'll be the last time I interrupt you.
Okay, no, anytime, feel free, and from my understanding, about 20 to 25 minutes?
I thought, you mean for the whole thing? No, I thought about 10 minutes was his, how long's your?
You have the 10-minute version?
I can try.
Okay, thanks. Okay, try your best.
All right. But, yeah, Professor Sabia, she's the director of the Florida Center, so we're in the Florida Center for Community Design and Resili- Research at USF, and so, and with this project, I'm a project manager, and have presented a few times, so I just want to make sure I can forward. Okay, so there we go, up and running, so I'm from the Florida Center for Community Design and Research at USF, and with Hillsborough County, we're working on a project that's addressing the perils of flood legislation, again, so this will be the 10-minute version, we work with College of Public Health, so they're one of our collaborators, and that's a major part of this project, so in 2015, you have the perils of flood legislation, which requires all municipalities address perils of flood, whether it's sea level rise, tidal inundation with hurricanes, inland flooding, et cetera, so our project was set out to address that, as well as the local mitigation strategy for the county, so as we got started, we were really focused on, and even called it perils of flood project, but as we got into it, we called, we transitioned to calling it the community vulnerability study. One of the main aspects of this is to understand how the community, not just built structures, but the community, is vulnerable to issues of flooding, so we transitioned to community vulnerability study, and so that study will then work directly towards the perils of flood legislation for the county, as well as their local mitigation strategy, so within the perils of flood, and this is something that the City of Tampa also has to, or has addressed, but just to make sure everybody is understanding that within perils of flood, you have six requirements, the top three that are shown here, reduce flood risk, removal of coastal property, and reduce losses of flood insurance, those ones actually require design, and decision-making, and thinking about how your community is going to adapt to issues of flooding, the bottom three are more about checking boxes, saying you're going to comply with Florida State Code for building, you're going to address the community rating system for FEMA's flood insurance requirements, and then you have the local mitigation strategy stuff, so our project, we started out really broad, it was sort of a new subject for our research center, we do work with communities all over the state, but this issue of flooding and flood resiliency was a new sort of thing, so we took a step back and wanted to start from the ground up, so what we started with was understanding what are the vulnerabilities to flooding at a broad, comprehensive scale, and then along with that, then, for Hillsborough County, where do these vulnerabilities exist, and then lastly, which is a little bit of the fun part, at least for us design-minded thinkers, is what are you going to do about it, right, there's a lot of science out there that talks about some of the impacts that we may encounter, and there are reports and things that are going on, I would say there's a lot less about what to do about it, and so we really are taking an urban design approach, and systems-thinking, design-thinking approach to what to do about it, our study is looking at sea level rise, and then the category one, three, and five hurricanes, and those are adjusted for sea level rise, our, the focus of our project is on the year 2045, so we're looking a bit into the future, so our project, one thing is, we, in starting out fresh, we wanted to understand what the hydrology system is, as well as the built environment impacts, although I would say those are what are typical in most assessments, so when you see these assessments about flood vulnerabilities, it typically accounts for properties, buildings, sometimes jobs, but the number four there is the people, right, the social component, and how those are affected, and I'll talk about those with some more examples as we go through, so as far as the hydrology part, one of the things we started with was really understanding, as we develop and grow, how is our system changing, so we're changing, in some instances, from a system that's on the left of that image, to what's on the right, and as a built environment, we are changing the way the water works and runs through our system, as we were doing that, one of my students actually said, well, we're looking at built environment and the public health issues, but nobody's ever taken a real hard look at the ecological impacts of flooding, whether this is sea level rise, tidal inundation, there are a few ecologic-focused studies, like Tampa Bay Estuary Program's done a really great one, but overall, that doesn't tend to show up in the research, so then, we're looking at mitigation strategies, and then we're doing these different, this, all this work feeds into other aspects, such as land development regulations, building codes, right, we're creating this body of knowledge to sort of fortify the way people are thinking about resiliency and moving forward, so we said in the beginning, well, we're not going to start from scratch, so we looked at the breadth of assessments that have already been done, and like I was saying, what we found was that they're mostly focused on built environment, when you look at the case studies, like Katrina, Florence, these different flooding events that we've had, there are really significant social and cultural aspects that go along with these events, so you have people that maybe don't have access to a vehicle, that aren't able to evacuate, or you have people that are reliant on, like, say refrigeration for medication, there's always social aspects that turn up in the research, so we included that in our study, so skipping forward here, those, some of the main, all right, so as we were compiling all of our research, we created this handbook, so that anybody that wanted to engage the issues, we created, everything we were reading, we created like one-to-three-page summaries about the issue, so if you want to understand what the CRS is within the FEMA flood insurance program, there's like a one-pager on that, if you want to understand what the, our summary about who are the vulnerable populations in our comprehensive review, there's like a three-pager on that, so you can look at that, and it is on Hillsborough County's website, it's sort of a living document, but whenever we saw something be vulnerable, say it was like on-and-off ramps from the Selman Highway, MPO noticed that one, we put that into a matrix, and created this big list of what are all the vulnerabilities, and so that ended up on a, like this giant spreadsheet, like that, and then we turned those into maps, so trying to find, within Hillsborough County, where do all of these vulnerabilities exist, and mapped those, and so you end up with something like this, so as an example, hotels, hotels can be, you know, we typically maybe think of those as a built environment feature, so we're going to lose maybe this many hotels along the coast, or these hotels have, maybe need to be rebuilt or something, there's economic factors associated with it in that way, but as we went through the process and the project, we put every map through the lens of built environment, social issues, and ecology, and what you end up with is thinking about, okay, so with hotels, which, in a category three hurricane, the inundation models show about 30, I think it's 32% of all hotels in all of Hillsborough County are in that inundation zone, and that's a pretty big number, especially when you start thinking about the social aspect, so you have within that many hotels, 30,000 to 50,000 people that might need to be evacuated, or find some place to go, this is also a group that maybe doesn't, isn't familiar with the issues that are surrounding, like the process of evacuation, so there's issues about, go along with that, so you have all of these surrounding social issues around hotels also, then in terms of sea level rise, you think, well, we're capitalizing on our geography with our hotels, and so they are near the coast, so with issues like sea level rise, you see that these usually larger structures may be impacting either habitat migration, if we're trying to conserve and retain some of our habitats along the coast, or you may end up dealing with seawall issues, things like that with sea level rise, you have other aspects, like people that don't have cars, or we call it vehicular, or I guess, I'll just go, this is lack of vehicle access, right, and so when you look at this map, you can see concentrations of those, of these categories of people, now I do think the next step would be to go into these communities and discuss this issue with them, but when you talk with emergency management folks, this is something that can possibly help them understand certain areas that they might want to address differently in terms of an event, so same thing with single-parent families, so you look at a map like this, and you think about, okay, this is a population group that may deal with an event, hurricane situation in a certain way, or it may affect them differently, but also, when you view it through these different lenses, there's a built environment component, so single-parent families may be reliant on schools a lot more as childcare, or recreation centers, or other forms of childcare, so that people can recover and get back on their feet after an event, so there are these other contextual surrounding issues, also with, say, wetlands, maybe not so much where the wetlands exist and how they're impacted, but maybe where they're not, so you see a lot in South Tampa, which is very blue in a category three hurricane inundation, you see that there are not as many wetlands, and that can definitely affect the way that the water's flowing through the system, the amount of capacity that you have to store, so along with this, thinking about it in terms of a systems point of view, I'll just share one example here, we typically think of there's evacuation zones, and the people outside of that evacuation zone may need to shelter in place, so if we take that as a population group, we get this sort of a map, but then also within our community, we have houses built in wide variety of different eras, the 2002 mark is especially interesting, because Hurricane Andrew and its effects on building code made great changes to our building codes, there's research that shows significant difference between post-Andrew code and pre-Andrew code, and how they handle hurricanes, so when you think about the mapping of our communities, and when they were built, it's kind of, that's an interesting factor also, so then, lastly, you might think of these people that are supposed to be sheltering in place, but maybe they live in a house that was built in 1920, and maybe they're a low-income group, and so they don't have the means to harden their homes, and so when you add that up, you end up with a more targeted map that can be used to think about these issues within the community, especially see like in East Tampa, up near the USF area, there's concentrations of these communities that are in older building stock, that are low-income group, and so there may be ways of helping those communities sort of move along, or prepare for some kind of event, there are a lot of grants and funds out there, and, you know, with all these grants, we're, the way we think of them also is not to just fix one problem, but you can maybe work on making entire communities better through the financial means that are available at federal and state levels, so there's a few more examples of this, but, you know, in the 10-minute version, I think that gives you a sense of what we're doing, and so our next steps forward are to go into the mitigation phase, and to kind of present a package of that information to share with administrators' agencies, and then also with you all in the county, but the next part will be a little bit more information about ways that people are mitigating for these types of vulnerabilities statewide and nationally, one last bit, we are working with the Technical University in Delft right now, so we, we've been working with them since about December, and have a grant to continue working with them, to, we're going out, Taryn and I are actually going in November, to meet with some of the big, the major participants in their Room for the River project, which, to understand their forms of governance, and community engagement, and how their orchestration of that $2.3 billion project was arranged, and managed, and completed, so that's our next task right now, along with, there's plenty of tasks, but that's something fun coming up.
Thank you very much. Sir, anyone?
Just one quick question, I spoke to someone a couple years ago from NOAA, who said that, I was asking about sea level rise mitigation, and, you know, some folks have talked about building Amsterdam-style berms and everything, or dikes, but this person said that if we rebuilt the mangroves, and you, maybe that's the same thing as you called the wetlands, but if we rebuilt them along the coast, that that might give us another 50 years, is there a plan to rebuild that, and you think that that would help?
Yeah, so there's a lot of different agencies working on that, especially Tampa Bay Estuary Program, through their funding mechanisms and that, and you're right, living shorelines can also accrete, they actually build soil over time, so that's one thing to think about, and then they are very resistant, as opposed to a seawall, which actually just diverts energy, they sort of absorb it, right, and so, and then there's all sorts of science between how much of that you need to dissipate, how much, and, but yeah, living shorelines, those are natural systems that address these kinds of issues, and, you know, the thing with the Netherlands and our participation with them, even they'll say, is that the strategy is not to build dikes and berms all over the place like they have, it's actually more in their kind of organization, orchestration of projects, and the way they proactively plan, and work with communities to sort of put themselves in a less risk-based scenario, so.
Councilman Maniscalco.
I don't remember if it was the Washington Post where I read it at, it could have been, but it's an article from 2017, when Irma was approaching, how, in so many words, Florida should have never been settled as it was, I mean, you see how Miami is, you see how vulnerable we are as a region, and, and basically how you can't beat Mother Nature, and Mother Nature will get its revenge, you know, in areas that should not, because Florida historically was mosquito-infested swamp, alligators, all that stuff, and I'd say because of, you know, greed and having to develop something because we can, you know, not because it's smart, but you look at this large chunk of our city going all the way down to the Air Force Base, the Air Force Base, which is so critical, and it's right there in the darkest spot, so with sea level rise, you know, and Councilman Carlson talked about things that we can do regarding mangroves and whatnot, but how do you fight Mother Nature?
So even the Dutch are pulling back from their trying to defeat nature, they've found it to be an unwise economic investment, so some of the gates that they have put up to block out the North Sea, they are actually opening and changing their land use within the area just on the other side, so that's one interesting aspect of it, the 30-minute version of this presentation includes a short history of our region, which, to your point, is, I touch on that, which is really interesting, because the first inhabitants were over in Safety Harbor, let's say, which has barely any impact to hurricane tidal inundation, but it's right next to the coast, same thing with First Street and St. Pete, it's like, it goes right through, it bisects a donut of no vulnerability of flooding, it's like the one spot, and they went right through the middle of it, and that's where the first inhabitants lived, even, even the initial, you know, people living in Hillsborough County, they were at Fort De Soto, Fort De Soto was the second least vulnerable to Safety Harbor, closest to the water, and there was actually Hooker's Point came out and protected it, where now we have Davis Islands, but it was within a bay, within a bay, within a bigger bay, and so when you kind of look at the geography of it, it was actually in a pretty protected place, there was a certain point in time, and really, it started with Port Tampa down in the southwest part of the peninsula, but that was more for infrastructure, but then Davis Islands was really kind of like the first step into the flood zone, and then after, you know, over time, we've increased our risk, right, and that's the way to, we kind of look at it, and then, but then I think the next approach is, so what do we do about it, and I think there's a lot of potential, there's actually even economic opportunity in it all, because you can get major funding from federal level to do projects for this purpose, which can also benefit your community, so.
I was talking to a 93-year-old family friend who designed my grandfather's mausoleum, where he's interred at in Myrtle Hill Cemetery in East Tampa, and he says, the way I designed it, and the way it was built, it'll survive a nuclear blast, and I believe it will, and I told him, it's not nuclear war that we're worried about, it's sea level rise, I go, this is going to be all underwater, so anyways, off-topic, but it's possible.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Dingfelder.
Mr. Chair, just looking at the agenda and looking in the audience, were we going to call on our own staff next on this topic?
Yes.
Because they were listed on the agenda, and I see Mr. Baird perhaps for Stormwater, and also Mr. Snelling from a planning perspective.
And thank you, sir, for your presentation, even, we appreciated the director's cut, and we'd like to, you know, so thank you.
Brad Baird, Public Works Administrator.
So, what have you, what have you guys been working on in this, on this issue?
Yeah, first, first I want to say that Mayor Castor has a plan, has been working on it, you know, over the last few months, it's one of the five initiatives that she has, is sustainability and resiliency, she will be searching nationwide for a sustainability and resiliency officer to, you know, carry out that plan, if you will, and then on top of that, of course, we have done a lot of work to date, I'll start with Stormwater, where we implemented the Stormwater Improvement Assessment in 2016, we're well over 100 million of, out of that 250 million of planned, designed, and constructed facilities, several of which include green infrastructure, such as rain gardens, bio swales, side stream baffle boxes, and pervious pavers, things like that, to, you know, help that cause, over the, over the last several decades, we've done things like raise control panel boxes for wastewater pumping stations, for instance, beef up our fleet of standby generators, equip our larger stations with permanent generators, so that we can keep those stations in operation, those are just a few examples, so.
Can I?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Brad, I know as part of the pipes plan, there's probably a little shy of a billion dollars to rebuild the wastewater treatment plant, and I, I can't help but assume that a good part of that is to, is to raise the facilities if they're not already raised, because that's a highly vulnerable area, correct?
No, the, part of that, first, let me back up, the first project coming out- The first project coming out is about $254 million, and it includes primarily the rehabilitation and replacement of equipment throughout the plant. And building additional primary tanks would be a big part of that project.
But in regard to resiliency, isn't, isn't all that stuff pretty low?
Well, it is. It's at elevation ten, but many of the facilities are higher than that. The critical part, you know, a treatment plant, a wastewater treatment plant by nature is always downstream and is typically near the water. So, it's, it's hard to get around that unless you're in the middle of the country, and because it's much more efficient and effective to use gravity to your advantage instead of pumping everything. But given that, the, probably the biggest area of improvement of the plant is building additional primary tanks, which, that part of the process will be online. It's when you get to the secondary part of the process and tertiary that you have to lift the water again. So those pumps would have to be raised up when we have, when we have a storm surge. And we would operate the plant manually, but when those pumps are lifted up, they're offline. But if you have primary treatment through that point, then the discharge into the bay at least would have that level of treatment. So that's the idea.
And Mr. Snelling? I think you heard, you heard the USF folks talk about sort of the big picture, but I'm sure over the last ten, fifteen years of working with FEMA and, and working with ourselves, we, we have mitigation and resiliency going on locally?
Well, we, I, the last time I was up here, I handed out all the, the three, the progress that we've been making in that regard.
Yeah, that was, that was sort of the green picture. I'm talking specifically about-
Well, the resiliency, it's as Brad says, we, they had the meeting with the folks that are going to help put together the sustainability plan, I think it was two weeks ago. And we're just waiting for that to come online, start to dictate the various programs and that. I'm sure they're going to incorporate everything that Brad's been doing, as well as other transportation initiatives and solid waste and all of the various utilities that have a relationship with resiliency and sea level rise. But the other thing is, is that the city has completed its vulnerability analysis. We got that done a couple of years ago, I was just looking for Sean College, because he was the one that did that for us through the Planning Commission. So we have completed our vulnerability analysis, and we had adopted about thirteen different policies in the comp plan that spoke to that resiliency and vulnerability analysis. So, we're kind of ahead of the game there. Clearly not, there's, I can't point, Brad can point to more than I can, to a lot of like sticks and bricks kinds of things that says, yes, this is going to withstand sea level rise and that. But we're really, we are really looking forward to the, this officer being assigned, so we can just really get to work on that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Councilman Carlson?
And I know that, since we set this up, the mayor's come out more aggressively with some plans and, and everything, and so this is just kind of parallel to all that. But maybe, I don't know, Mr. Snelling, with you or Mr. Baird, my recollection, tell me if I'm right, is the Stormwater Tax that was passed and the Stormwater Plan that's going through and the Water Wastewater Plan, that is dealing with the current situation. Most, if not all of it, doesn't anticipate sea level rise, correct? So we have to look at that as a separate issue and a separate budget?
That would be a better Brad question. Yeah.
Thank you.
Both of those programs do include an element associated with sea level rise, but that is not funded specifically under those two plans. But I do want to use one example under the Water and Wastewater Pipes Program. Many of our wastewater pipelines, the gravity pipelines are in, you know, are aging as, as we presented before, and take on what is called infiltration and inflow into the pipeline. So if the pipeline is, say, eight feet deep and the water table is up, is only three feet deep, then any cracks in that pipeline will take on that shallow aquifer. And, and then that means we have to treat more wastewater down at Howard Ave Current Treatment Plant. Well, this lining of those pipes will take care of the main pipelines. It will not take care of the laterals, but it'll take care of the main pipelines. Well, I shouldn't say it won't take care of the laterals, it'll take care of our portion of the laterals. But I say that because the sea level rise impacts that shallow aquifer and makes it saltier. And then, when that water is, is saltier and coming in, of course, our chlorides down at the treatment plant and the salts in the wastewater are higher, and it makes it a little more difficult to treat.
Just, just to narrow a second, if you don't mind, the, so on pipes and I think on Stormwater, you looked way into the future, your staff looked way into the future, trying to figure out, what are we going to need? How do we, how do we anticipate what the problems will be? How do we address the current issues and not just provide stopgap, but look in the future? When, is there any chance you, knowing that the sustainability person's not in yet, could you give us your best guess as to when we might have to approve a pipe-style program for sustainability or sea level rise? Any, is that five, 10 years away or more?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that today, but the example I used earlier on wastewater pumping stations and the rehabilitation and raising those control panels, that's a great example of incorporating sea level rise, a solution, if you will, into a project. And so we will be rehabilitating, I think the number was about a hundred million dollars worth of pumping stations. Many of those pumping stations, we have not raised the control panel yet. So we would, of course, raise them, and in consideration of what the projections are for sea level rise. But I don't have a direct answer, but I wanted to get that in.
Anyone else? Any other councilmen?
I was going to chime in, that, I recall when Hurricane Sandy hit the southern end of Manhattan with the subway systems, you know, it wasn't necessarily that the tracks and the tile and that sort of thing, concrete were easier to rehab, but it was the electrical systems that just got totally massacred with the saltwater corrosion to add to the, add insult to injury.
Yeah.
But I, I'm glad that we're looking ahead and raising those, you know, really expensive electrical systems on our own facilities.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. You know, one thing to add in, one thing that I did after, I guess it was Irma a couple of years ago, that was 2017, was, I, I remember, like, like all of us who were in office, you're out trying to help the community and trying to help populations. I always say that for, you know, working people, lower-income folks are hurt, category one is like a category four. You know what I mean? It's very, very difficult, it goes without saying, but it's to always try to, you know, key together all of your, you know, stakeholders of compassion and of activism in the community. You know, one of the things that I tried to do after that was to try to, for, for my district, for the North Tampa area in particular, make sure the groups like the University Community Development Center and, you know, crossover church, the local police, et cetera, that they're all connected, so that when something like this happens, there can be a coordinated concerted effort for, for folks who are without food, without, with electricity, who are going to have to miss numerous days of work, et cetera. So, just issues like that as well. But, but thank you very much, and, and Councilman, thank you for bringing this forward, very important issue. Thank you, sir. Okay, we next move onward to item number 12.
Good afternoon, Council. Gregory Hart, Minority Business and Small Business Development Manager. I do have a presentation for you to facilitate your workshop discussion, if that can be queued up. Great, fantastic. The PowerPoint that I'm, I'm providing you has four focused areas. It addresses recent program history, specifically the evolution of enabling legislation and policy, kind of give you what has happened. Secondly, it's going to address the mechanics and logistics that underpin how the program is implemented. Third, it's going to address the framework to develop strategies for improving access and economic opportunity, drives the inclusion and the meaningful participation by WMBEs. And lastly, I'm going to touch on highlights with regard to performance metrics and outcomes. So initially, let's talk about, or let me share the roots of the program. It was first legislated in the early 90s on the predicate that there existed patterns of discrimination against WMBEs regarding their availability and inclusion in contracting activities. Hence, the city declared a compelling interest in implementing race and gender conscious policies to remedy past discrimination and provide minorities with improved access to procurement opportunities. The initial legislation contained a sunset date of 1997, unless the city found that efforts to increase minority participation had not been achieved. So, the program continuously incubates and evolves in order to remain relevant based on Tampa's market area and business demographics. The program is now administered under the city's Equal Business Opportunity Act. Next? Next slide? Okay. I'm providing for your reference some acronyms and key terminology that you can refer to at your discretion.
Will we be testing on those?
No, sir. Maybe so. All right, next please. Next slide? Oh, there we go. So, the Equal Business Opportunity Mission and Strategic Plan is to identify economic opportunities in city contracting, to create sustainable initiatives that are relevant to Tampa's market. We want to structure competitive business opportunities commensurate with the availability and capacity of certified firms in our market. We want to establish specifications to attain supply diversity. We want to maximize utilization of WNBEs, SLBEs, LGBTBEs in contracts by facilitating access to our, our bid process, our request for proposals, and our request for qualifications, the solicitations that we engage in. Most importantly, we want to measure that achievement using acceptable best practice and equal business opportunity regulatory standards and audits. And we want to reinforce certification and outreach to foster economic resiliency. Next slide. So, the, the current city code of ordinance is Chapter 26.5, and the purpose and intent of current legislation is to codify framework for enacting race and gender conscious initiatives that meet requirements set forth by the U.S. Supreme Court and controlling case law from the progeny of federal district and appellate courts, and to institutionalize a legally defensible, sustainable WNBE program that depoliticizes procurement processes and policies. Next, please. This is a, just a quick functional organizational chart depicts the structure that we currently operate under to fulfill our mission. The, the operating divisions that you see there, program metrics and analytics, program outreach and certification services, and program compliance and monitoring, all those divisions work interdependent, not independent. Each function must be efficient and effective to maximize the access to our contract opportunities, to ensure that there's inclusion, and also important to monitor for compliance. Next, please. So, a little bit more background and chronology. In 2005, the city commissioned its third disparity study. In 2007, that disparity study was completed. The results of that, that commissioned study found that there was no disparity in subcontracting. There was no underutilization to speak of. There was, however, a disparity in prime contracting. Therefore, the city of Tampa did not have a legal basis for setting mandatory race and gender-specific project contract goals. In other words, the study said there was parity under existing regulatory guidance. The primary recommendation did emphasize that we needed to develop a diversity management initiative, which was to track, collect, and analyze data that would support continued evolution of the program. So in 2008, ordinance 2008-89 was promulgated to comply with this mandate and to set forth some new initiatives. Next, please. What occurred that was somewhat difficult to endure was that the WBE program was suspended for nearly four years, specifically as it relates to setting project-specific goals that targeted minority and women-owned firms. That was suspended for four years. What became our primary initiative and focus was the Race and Gender Neutral Program, which operates under the SLBE program. That's the Small Local Business Enterprise Program. That became our primary initiative. Therefore, what this all meant was that to reinstate the WNBE initiatives, the city had to meet strict judicial guidelines that the courts now apply to municipal programs such as ours. New business processes enacted to ensure comprehensive data collection and report methodologies aligned with the court rulings. That's the DMI program that I just mentioned, and I'll speak to that a little bit more. So we began compiling multi-year data for disparity analysis. Next, please. That process of collecting data and developing a, a data mark business system to collect it, we completed it in 2012. We compiled the four years of DMI data for the mandatory disparity analysis. Development of our business system to collect all of that information took two years. The use of race and gender contract goals are now based on multi-year statistical evidence, and that's a multi-year meaning an average of five years. And now we have a legal standing to continue our program when we want to address, address specific race and gender initiatives. And fiscal year 2013, those new initiatives were implemented, and they're all narrowly tailored to address specific underutilization of affected business enterprises. This is a representation of how we go about doing that. The multiple business systems that serve as our source data would include Oracle DemandStar, which is our electronic notification system that the purchasing department manages. We have prima vera contract compliance module. We have our own B2G software system. My point here is that there are a number of business systems that are in that, that oval under database source that we extract information on the number of contracts, payments, bids, solicitation, a whole host of, and variety of information. That information is filtered by industry category in those barrels in the center of this, this, this chart here. In doing so, we're able to create a data mark by looking at the availability and utilization of all the various race and ethnic groups who are in business and certified as such. From this process, we generate about 30-plus reports. Those reports are analyzed to measure disparity, and that information is what the administration and yourselves rely on to formulate policy and develop initiatives to serve our minority and women-owned businesses. Very quickly, this depicts how we continuously employ and apply this, this process of analysis and decide what kind of initiative we're going to overlay on our various procurement solicitations. We're constantly looking at, from a race and gender neutral perspective, who's out there in the community that's certified? We're looking at, under the data management process, what type of contracts do they have the capacity and the ability to perform? Which of those contracts were they actually awarded? What were the expenditures? That is filtered through our disparity analysis. If in fact, there is predominant utilization and there's no disparity, then the small local business program becomes the primary operating mechanism to facilitate inclusion. When we find that there's underutilization by any of those groups, then we take it through the verification of the evidence, which then establishes a legal basis for us to set race and gender conscious goals on projects and other initiatives. So that's just an overview of what we do on a day-to-day basis. Next, please. So who are our target constituents? Certification eligibility is open to all independently owned and operated small businesses, including women and minority-owned companies. The Small Local Business Program is based on size, grocery seats, and location. It's race neutral and gender neutral. Our market area under the Small- Our market area under the Small Business Program are the five contiguous counties. That's Hillsborough, Pope, Pinellas, Pasco, and Manatee. The WNBE program is race and gender focused, 51% ownership and controlled by the minority of female individuals, and that's regardless of their trade or specialty and profession. And that's statewide. We've certified WNBE statewide. Next, please. Very quickly, I wanted to give you some sense of our certification business directory. This is a very dynamic slide here. I could run it this afternoon. It might show a subtle difference, plus or minus. Very quickly, I'm going to share with you, I did some quick numbers. About 25% of this directory is African-American, about 4% or 5% is Asian, 30% are women business enterprises, Caucasian females specifically. Hispanics represent about 24% of this database of directory of certified firms, and Native Americans 1%. Now, let's look at SLBE certifications. Next slide, please. Another dynamic slide. Caucasians represent about 51% of this pool of certified firms under the Small Business Program. African-Americans 24%, Hispanics about 21% or 99, Asian-Americans a 3%, and Native Americans 1%. Again, this is the Small Local Business Enterprise Certification Database. This Venn chart is extremely important. One of the things that we do is particularly when we were just running the Small Local Business Program, we found it necessary to direct all of our minority-owned and women-owned companies into a Small Local Business Certification category, which is something they perhaps did not think about before, because the initiatives were focused legally on a Small Business Program. So, if we could get them duly certified, it increased the economic opportunities before them and also participation, which, in fact, is something we required in order to justify setting race and gender conscious goals. These are the policy applications currently in effect. Any competitive procurement need, we in the MBE office, we get to review and evaluate that procurement need and determine what initiative is most appropriate to be overlaid on that solicitation to increase participation and identify the economic opportunity. So, we have shelter market, we have bid discount, we have contract goal setting, we have evaluation points that we will award to proposers who are prime contractors and certified and/or subconsultants that are certified and participating in an RFP process. We have recently increased it from, it's not reflected here, from 1 to 10 points to 1 to 20 points. So, we are incentivizing our contractors and vendors to put forth that extra effort to seek inclusion on our projects, our proposals, our design, build, and all of those types of contracts. The mayor is also rolling out 10 points for workforce development. So, those bidders who seek, and those proposers who seek a city contract, we are wanting to see to what extent they are conducting workforce development initiatives or currently involved in such relationships to help infuse and bolster the workforce available in this community. Next, please. So, what are our development tools to improve economic opportunity? We have bid discounts, I mentioned. For a small local business, it's 5% not to exceed $10,000. For an underutilized WNBE, it's 5% not to exceed $20,000. And that percent is for evaluation purposes only. It's not as if we, you know, another 5% is awarded to them in terms of dollars, or we subtract 5% of the bid that they've submitted. It's for evaluation purposes only. We have the RFP preference points, bond waivers up to $200,000, insurance reduction and waivers depending upon the risk assessed. We have joint business, joint venture business arrangements. We have prompt payment for certified firms. If it's a prime certified firm, that prompt payment from the city is within 10 days. If you're a subcontractor, we do require that prime to pay that certified sub within five days of their payment from the city of Tampa. We have a retainage reduction at the prime level from 10 to 5%. We have payment verification and compliance audits. It's extremely important to our constituents, that someone is monitoring whether they're getting paid, okay, and that we're holding contractors compliant. This is a, it depicts, this is a good way to show how the dollars flow through the program. This chart illustrates the typical fiscal year funding of the city's capital and operating programs. In this particular case, as is typical, we're looking at about a billion-dollar budget, and this is how it's structured. Next slide. This chart illustrates the competitive contract spend that falls out of that $1 billion budget. The WNBE and SLBE program operates solely on competitive spend. Those dollars that are awarded through competitive solicitations does not include procurements that occur under state contract, emergency situations, or piggyback contracts. We don't get a shot at those dollars. Those contracts are ordered by another entity, although they sometimes have inclusionary requirements upon them. So, in that illustration I presented of about a billion-dollar city operating capital budget, about 19% of those dollars are actually utilized for competitive procurement. That's what we get a shot at. So, in this particular example, it was 188 million out of $1 billion. And in that instance, the WNBE program netted about 17 million or 9%, 10%. And the SLBE program, 12% or 22 million. Next slide, please. This is simply reflecting our program goals, and it's a percentage of goals based on an analysis of procurement in all five industry categories and the companies that are certified as WNBE or SLBE. So, this is an average of all those five industry categories. So, the WNBE prime overall goal is 14%. The SLBE program annual goal is 15% for subcontracts. For, excuse me, the WNBE, the WNBE subcontract annual overall goal is 15%. The SLBE subcontract annual overall goal is 10%. Next slide, please. This is rendering a representation of our responsibility to track and monitor compliance with the inclusionary objectives and commitments that are made by the contractor. The box, the square field in red is where we have initial compliance input, and the wider clear boxes we're continually involved in as well, such as the contract payments and the audits. Next slide, please. This is our compliance audit process. Essentially, what happens, I want you all to know that there is monitoring that does occur on a daily basis. We do desk audits. We function as a quasi-regulatory independent audit function for the city as relates to contracts. So, when there's a payment made by the city to a contractor, the Oracle or financial system, we do have some automated support, and this reflects the automated system report. It notifies us that it's occurred, it notifies the prime contractor that it's occurred, and that we are telling the subcontractor that we know that the city has paid you, and we're asking the subcontractor to let us know whether or not they've been paid. If they haven't, the system's going to alert everybody, and it comes to a halt until we sort through it. Next slide, please. So, let's review some of the program metrics and trends to date. Next slide. These metrics reflect the prime contract participation over the past five years. What's important about this trend, if you recall what I said in the very beginning, in 2013, we had a basis for activating our race-conscious and gender-conscious initiatives in a narrowly tailored fashion. So, we're looking at what has occurred since that time. Taking the most recent report year, fiscal year 18, you can see that we had 8%, close to 9% participation in WNBE awards, WNBE awards. Now, there's something very interesting here. When you compare fiscal year '16, fiscal year '17, and FY '18, you can see that there's a fluctuation in the numbers. And what is occurring when we do the regression analysis is that, right now, the city of Tampa is perhaps in one of the biggest, most vibrant economic development and growth cycles in its history. And it's putting some constraints on the resources, particularly the human capital, the vendor capital that's in our community to respond to the needs that not only we have, but the rest of the community, the public and private sector. We're all competing aggressively for the same contractors, the same subcontractors, the same suppliers. And that reflects some of the challenges that we face in achieving participation where we have economic opportunity. Not every contract, not every procurement that we engage in is going to have an economic opportunity for every business in the community. But when it doesn't, what we do is we work with our partners, we collaborate with Moffitt, with Tampa General Hospital, with Hillsborough County Schools. And we source our database and refer or provide that database of certified firms to our partners who may have contracts, and often do, that align with the services and products that our certified companies provide, that we can't take advantage of on a regular basis. So, it's a collaborative effort, and it's community-wide. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown of the prime contract participation by ethnicity and gender. Next slide, please.
Wait, wait. That was too fast.
Okay. Can we reverse, go back to the previous slide? This particular slide, just to highlight, in FY '17, you'll see where black businesses represented about 31% of the dollars that flowed within the pool of dollars that were available for certified firms. In FY '18, black businesses represented 13%. If you look at the comparison, again, it, to some degree, reflects the challenge in the workforce to net the companies that have services and products aligned with what we Next slide. Subcontract goal set versus goal attainment. What I want to illustrate here is that the contracts that are scoped and have economic opportunity that aligns with our certified firms, we break those contracts and those projects down to identify what those tasks are. Based on those tasks, based on the availability of our firms, we're going to set a goal for participation. So, when we set 15% goal, as an example, and we achieve 15% goals, 100% of goal. This is a reflection of how we evaluate a project's opportunities, and we set a goal on it. These are averages. So, in fiscal year 18, the average goal, the average goal set was about 14%, 13.8%. The average goal attainment was 12%, resulting in an 85% goal set, goal attainment. The previous year, we were 102% of attainment of goals that we were set. I think this is a very good metric on the extent to which we are analyzing what we procure, where the opportunities are for inclusion, and then putting forth a mandate for outreach and participation based on a numerical percent. And that evaluation of the attainment is based on the good faith effort. It's not a quota. Next slide. This is a breakdown of how those dollars were distributed based on race, ethnicity, and gender. As you can see, I would like to point out that in FY '18, of the pool of dollars that went to subcontractors, 72% of those dollars went to black businesses. This was not a coincidence. This was intentional. It was intentional because there was an empirical, data-based underutilization, which allowed us to put our foot on the pedal a little bit harder to accelerate the extent to which we outreach and set goals specifically to identify black-owned businesses. And that's what the disparity analysis, that's what the importance of certification allow us to do. Hispanic businesses represented 23%, 4% for women-owned businesses, and so forth and so on. Again, what drives that participation is whether or not we have the type of needs that these businesses can provide to the city. And those businesses must have the wherewithal, and they must have the capacity to respond to those needs. Next slide. Shelter market. This is an initiative that's primarily designed to attack underutilization at the prime contract level. This is where we're able to shelter procurements that have a value of $300,000 or less. The old terminology that may have been used as a set aside, this is not quite a set aside because it's a competitive process. We have to have a minimum of three certified firms that are licensed and have the capacity to respond to the procurement. So, they get to compete within their peer group, not with the big companies. And this has been extremely a successful method and initiative to increase participation at the prime contract level. Next slide. Next, please. Next, please. There we go. This represents how those shelter market dollars break out and were distributed based upon the type of certification. Here again, I think this is a reflection of where our emphasis has been the past year, 2018. 48% of those dollars went to black-owned businesses because we had a statistical mandate to try and put more emphasis and identify more businesses that could respond to these shelter market initiatives. The previous year, Hispanic-owned businesses were 44% of those shelter market dollars. When we dig deeper and look into some of the dynamics as to why these outcomes have occurred, in that particular year, there were a lot more landscape maintenance-type of contracts that were awarded. We do have a very robust directory of companies that do landscape maintenance that are Hispanic-owned, and our contracts are, they run three to five years. So, it's kind of cyclical. Sometimes these opportunities don't come around, but for every, you know, three or four years. Next slide. Quote wire. This is This is a reflection of the extent to which we have been successful at pushing informal contracts, informal procurements into our certified business community. We increased contracts awarded to our WNBEs by 6.7% over the last 2018 fiscal year. These are awards that do not necessarily get into the paper, they don't come before the council. These are $2,000, $3,000, $800 procurements that are oftentimes, if not always, initiated at the department level. We have policies and procedures in place whereby their first outreach should be a firm that is certified, that can provide that commodity or whatever it is that they're looking for. And if not, then they're asked to at least reach out to three firms, one of those three being a certified company. So it's been extremely successful. Next slide.
Greg.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. On that slide, I don't, the quote wire, I don't know if I see a total of all awards under quote wire. Is quote wire a $25 million deal or a $10 million deal for the whole city?
I see. I can give back and give you the exact number.
Ballpark, do we know?
Pardon?
Ballpark.
I'm going to say ballpark, we're probably looking at probably under five, probably under about, what is that category? I'd say about $2 million, possibly.
No, then we don't, I'm not communicating properly. That two and a half million on the bottom right corner is the total of
Oh, yes.
Of the
That's correct.
Of the minority vendors. I'm wondering what is the total for quote wire contracts in the city per year?
I'll confirm that for you, but several hundred thousand, excuse me, several million dollars.
Several, several million?
Several million, yes. That's 2.5 million, so we're probably looking at, I don't know, 10, 15 million.
Okay. So
But I would like to confirm that for you.
So we're probably in the neighborhood of about 25% of the quote wire?
10, 15, 20%. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next slide, please. These are procurements that occur through DemandStar, the electronic notification, procurements that are $500,000 or less, the four being $25,000. The reason that this range is emphasized is because our disparity studying analysis revealed that our certified firms, for the most part, have the capacity to prosecute work and contracts that are under $500,000 with some ease. Not to suggest that we haven't had and do have certified WNBEs and SLEs that have had $1 million, $2 million contracts. But this is where the predominant activity and award occurs, $500,000 and under. So in this particular DemandStar electronic notification, $12 million has been received and awarded to our certified firms.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Greg, let me ask a question. When I look at these acronyms, and then I look at these dollar figures, when we say black, are we talking about black males, black females? Or we go to the acronym WBE, is that just women in general? How do you categorize it? Because when I look at WBE, and when I keep seeing those numbers, those numbers are high. So are those white Caucasian women, or are those just women in general? How is that categorized?
Good question. WBE is solely a reflection of Caucasian females only. Ethnic females are going to be rolled up under that racial category. And that is a legal guideline for our type of program.
When I ask that question, when I look at those numbers, that still tells me we're still falling through the cracks when I look at that. And then I look at, you keep saying the word good faith effort. What I see from the procurement process, from this process, is what I look at as the RFP. And when I have been here for a while, and I see how some of these RFP are rigged, it seems like it's specifically driven at a certain angle. And it kind of bothers me at times that that process has gone that way, and then council's out of the loop in that process until the end, when it's time for us to make a decision on something. And I think maybe that's the gap that's hurting some of this process. And I think maybe councilmen need to look at the RFP process to how we can be more beneficial or be instrumental in that process from the onset versus the end game. And maybe we can have some increases on some of these numbers. And I've been strongly looking at that, and I'm having a couple of my interns look at that because that bothers me when I see these numbers, these acronyms, and they don't jive or mix with me, and it just tells me that's just a, what I call a crack that people fall into, that they hide. So we want to fill those gaps. So I'm looking to, for procurement and yourself to be able to fill those gaps, because I believe the RFP is the problem.
Thank you for that feedback.
Anyone else? I've got some questions when it's done, but
All right, I think we're about done. Next slide, let's see what's coming up. This is very interesting to my staff, to the administration. You've heard me say many times that depending on what the city of Tampa procures versus what Hillsborough County procures versus what any of our other governing bodies or private sector agencies procure is going to determine, to a large extent, what type of economic opportunities that we can emphasize and recruit certified firms to engage us in. The city of Tampa does not engage in very many vertical construction projects where a large number of our certified firms reside in terms of discipline or industry category. We're not doing the brick and mortar. Yes, we do, community centers. Yes, we do fire stations. But the trades that are typical, such as masons, drywall, painters, all of those, we try to find them work through our partners because we don't have as much of that. Look at this. 50% of what we procure is in the category of goods. 50%. We're talking about street sweepers, asphalt concrete, we're talking about chlorine, we're talking about water treatment plant, chemicals. We spend millions and millions of dollars on. We're talking about equipment, fire trucks, police vehicles, fleet vehicles. The city buys a lot of supplies and commodities. And there needs to be, and this is community-wide, more training, development of our firms, and identifying those disciplines that our community is deficient in to support the needs of our public and private sector entities. And the marketplace is getting constrained. I see a resurgence in the attention given to the vocational trades and the technical trades, which is where the plumbers, the welders. There was an effort by the port a couple of years ago, because I contacted my office, they were looking for young folks who they could steer towards underwater welding. Those young folks, 20 years old, 21, they finished that education training process, they can earn six figures in some of these trades that people have overlooked for so many years. So I guess the point here I want to make is, the city of Tampa does heavy procurement in the area of goods, it's not construction. Next slide, please.
And before we go any further, I wonder, how long has this workshop been going on for? I guess we didn't time it, this particular workshop.
Twenty minutes?
Okay, we usually limit workshops to 30, so about how much longer do you think you have in terms of your presentation?
You got it. Connecting the community, this is the last slide.
Okay, great. Okay, let's try to, and then Councilman Dingfelder has some questions, et cetera, just to keep mind of that, it's an important issue, but we, I think we have one, two, three more workshops after this, so just to keep that in mind. Thank you, sir.
I'm done, sir.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelder, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Greg, that was probably the most informative presentation I've seen on this topic in all my years of sitting up here.
Thank you, sir.
And I appreciate it, because you really spelled it out, and it does take some time, but you spelled it out in terms of the various programs we have. Even though you and I sat down face to face and talked about these issues, I never, I never got the full grasp of all these things. So I do appreciate it, and I hope people who are watching, that we've been doing a lot, but in my opinion, as you know, I think we have a lot more to do. The, let me ask a question. In terms of, we had three different slides up there in terms of the accomplishments we've made in WNBE, the accomplishments we've made in SLE, the accomplishments we've made in shelter. And there were three different breakouts. And I'm wondering, do you know what the total, out of the $188 million that's accessible, okay? Do you have a sense of what percentage or what dollar amount the BBE, the black business enterprises, over the last year or two, and it looks, I'm glad we had a boost last year, that was good, but over the last couple of years, what that total is out of the 188 million? Because I saw three different slides, and, you know, they're going by fast, I wasn't able to, you know, write down each of those numbers and then divide it into the 188, but do you have any sense of that?
I'd have to go back and, to be exact, do some calculation based on the slides that I presented today, but I'll give you a general sense of the 188 million, maybe about 40 million of that is conducive for participation, because it's not the chemicals, it's not, it's not the equipment. It's real procurement.
So the 188 is not accessible either, total?
Total, no, sir.
Okay, so now we're down to what?
About 40 million.
40 million.
40 million.
All right, so out of the 40 million, what percentage or what number would be associated with BBE, with black-owned businesses?
Again, I'm going to give you
Ballpark.
A ballpark
I won't hold you to it.
Guesstimate, which is somewhere between 7 and 10%.
Okay.
That would be prime and subcontract participation. That would be the shelter market, that would be prime contract and subcontract participation, through the goal setting, through the shelter market, through the RFP, RFQ processes.
Okay. Somebody up here mentioned about the, a new study had been budgeted, I can't remember if it was Bill Orlando, mentioned about a new study is in our budget. Is that accurate?
Oh, what was being referred to is, I recommended through the budget process, recommended through the budget process that we anticipate perhaps engaging in our fourth disparity study. The suggested timeframe upon which one would want to do that is five to 10 years. Well, we're at that five or 10-year milestone. One thing about the city of Tampa that we're often called upon to share is that we have a diversity management system, the DMI, so we're able to do disparity analysis on a fairly regular basis. Is it a study? No. So we're at that juncture where we may want to have a consultant come in and look at what we've been doing, and reaffirm that we're doing it right in accordance with the legal requirements to have a race-conscious program.
And we have
And we've budgeted somewhere around $200,000, $250,000, should we embark upon that during fiscal year 2020.
So who makes that decision of whether or not we should do that?
That's the administration, that's the mayor in conversation with the stakeholder departments, which would be ours, purchasing, contract administration, and perhaps a number of others.
Okay. You and I have known each other a long time
That's a checkup. It's called a checkup. It's like going to the doctor, getting checked up. We look well.
You and I have known each other a long time, so I know you're not going to take this wrong, but you kind of, there was a drop, and you said, "Well, we're having trouble because there's so much activity in the private sector that we're having trouble pulling in the minority vendors into the public sector." I think that was basically the rationale behind some of the dips?
What I wanted to highlight was there's challenges in the public and private sector. We, along with Hillsborough County, along with the airport, along with Tico, along with Water Street, we're all competing for the same workforce, the same vendors, the same subcontractors.
Right.
And it's a contractor's market. I mean, they could pick and choose who they want to work with. And the capacity is, the capacity is not there to serve us all.
I guess my response would be, somebody's responded to these bids, and the work's getting done. So I'm not really sure why it wouldn't be the minority community
Mr. Dingfelder, one of the variables, and this is, there's so many variables, there's so many conditions, but one of them, in this regard, is, was it that the city is needing in terms of services or products? Does everybody engage in underground utility work? It's more than just having a shovel and a truck. And a lot of our businesses, I mentioned earlier, are not in that space.
Right.
They're the painters, they're the plumbers.
So you set me up for my final, I think it's my final comment. And I've said this before, when this council passed pipes, and if I was here two or three years ago, when they passed stormwater for $250 million, or pipes for $3 billion, is we need to be using some very significant amount of those funds, $3.25 billion total, okay? A million dollars a year needs to be set aside for capacity building, for capacity building. And I've got a feeling that they're in a whole lot in your budget, there's no offense to you, because you don't make your budget, but there's not a whole lot in your budget for capacity building. You kind of mentioned it at the beginning, in terms of outreach and that sort of thing, but I'm talking, you know, out of $3.25 billion, that every year over the next 20 years, we should be spending at least a million dollars on capacity building. And I don't know exactly what that means in terms of how that works. It's not my job to do that. But I'm going to stress this to the administration, to the mayor, chief of staff, and to you guys, that before y'all come in here, and, not you, but before Brad Baird comes in here with, you know, a $10 million project for this vendor and a $20 million project for this pipes vendor, that this councilman really wants to see that program in place. And, you know, and with the last slide up, I think it's a start, okay? Bridges to business, vendor certification tour. I think that's a nice start, but to me, that's just knocking on the door. And I say we have to go through that door, and we have to sit down with that community, and we need to nurture, we need to nurture. And it's not going to be an overnight thing, it might take us a couple of years, but that's okay, because that $3 billion pipes program is a 20-year program. So if it takes a few years to get those underground engineers, you know, involved and committed, it's for the benefit of everybody. And, all right, that's my soapbox.
I would like to, what may have gotten lost early in some of my comments, was that Mayor Castor and the administration have taken significant strides in that direction, and
I heard something about 10.
Yes, sir.
10 what?
Mayor Castor is wanting to put the onus, or at least share it, with and put it on the shoulders of these contractors that are going to be going after the pipes projects. So she's imposing 10% points specifically for mentoring, internships, apprenticeships, workforce development. We're all in this together, and that is the intent of applying 10 points out of 100 specifically for, you're going to bid on this pipes project? We want to know tangibly you're going to bid on this Pipes project, we want to know tangibly what are you doing or what are you going to do that's tangible that we can evaluate, grade you on and monitor you on to help with the workforce development, to help with the training and apprenticeship.
Let me stop you there, let me stop you there.
Yes, sir.
And let me move on to Council, I know Councilman Dingfelder was finishing his questions. Councilman Goode, go ahead, sir.
Can I just respond to that one thing? Thank you. I think that's a nice approach, but I think it delegates that responsibility, again, to the primes, okay? And I don't know why we wouldn't want to have our own hands, hands-on. You know, this is a lot of money the community has, has agreed to be, I won't say taxed, to be feed over the next 20 years. And I, and I don't know why we wouldn't want to have our hands on that, on those programs to do it ourselves. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Goode, go ahead, sir.
You've got nobody watching the hen house, Mr. Dingfelder, that's why. No one's watching the money.
That's us.
Period. You know, you, you look at these numbers, you look at the Bridges to Business. You know, that's why I was hoping Ms. Schenberger would be here today, Mr. Chairman. You know, we have to stop doing things in the past and start doing things for the future. We have a school system, and we should be collaborating with the school system so they can know what jobs that we have in our city workforce, so they can be applying that to the next generation of adults to be able to come over here and get a job. Entrepreneurship programs, internship programs for those young juniors and seniors. The Bridges to Business program, that's great, but that ain't touching the surface. Can you tell me what's the number of people who have successfully completed that program since it's been implemented? Through the whole process? That's my point. We got to be able to have a finish line. And that's how you're going to be able to give accountability, a finish line. We have to look at these roadblocks. Yeah, you, you say these contracts, but nine times out of 10, they don't want to hire certain people. City, we don't hire certain people. That's the problem. If we're saying we have, we need, in need of a workforce, but hell, we're not employing anybody in the workforce, wha, what are we doing? Only certain people get into work. So when you put out an RFP, only certain people going to get to work. I don't care how you look at it. We get it at the end of the day, it's too late. You know, make changes, this and that, that, I think that has to happen beforehand. So we're saying 15 percent, and I read an RFP, I don't want to hear no good faith. I want to hear you say on that contract that you're going to give me 15 percent, and how you're going to give me that 15 percent. When I look at other cities, like the city of Orlando, Orange County, their numbers are off the chart. Obviously, they're doing something that we are not doing. We got to go to other places to see what they're doing. I went on a trip to Chicago last week. I saw several different things that I'm hoping that we could do that I learned from other cities that were at the conference. I'm just saying, when you're putting this kind of money out there, you've got to have an officer watching the money and making sure that these contracts, these people are doing what they say they're going to do and hold them accountable. Or we pull those contracts. But we don't do that. We give out people money and we hope in good faith that they're doing the job. We hope this happens, or they come back, "Well, we tried." Well, who's going out there checking to see if they actually got 8 percent on the job site? Or they just did some applications, "Well, we had some applicants, but we just couldn't obtain that goal." Can't do business as usual. And I can, I can tell you, with that kind of money, with the Pipes program, some of these other programs, I, I'm going to be hard-pressed on these contracts coming up because there's no way I can see going forward and ma, making sure that everyone is getting a piece of the pie because everybody was hungry and we're not really feeding the people we should be feeding.
Thank you, sir. Councilman, go ahead, sir.
Just a statement and a question. I've heard a lot of feedback, lots and lots of feedback from community leaders about this and, and requests and demands that we change this. Thank you for the thorough presentation. One of the complaints I've, I've gotten is, is about the purchasing department in general, the processes, the, the lack of outreach. You're showing a lot of outreach, so thank you for doing that. One of the complaints is DemandStar. DemandStar is open to everybody, but you also have to know how to use it and how to get access to it. And so it's a form, but we have too many contracts, minority and otherwise, where there aren't enough bidders on them. And I don't understand, how, how can we have $650,000 signage contracts with one bid? I, it just drives me crazy. And I know the mayor and the chief of staff are looking at this carefully, so I appreciate all their help in doing that. The question is, so we're city council, you report to the, the mayor and the administration. What is it that we can do? We all have the same goal. I think you legitimately want to hit these goals. What is it that we can do to support you? What can we do to help you to hit these goals?
For one thing, I believe council can be, as, as Mr. Goode has expressed eloquently, be an advocate. Be, be out there in the community and help to educate the community on how to access city opportunities. What's out there in the community in terms of educational and training resources that can increase their economic position? I mean, I, I mentioned how we talk to HCC and, and we work with SBDC at USF. We work with the Entrepreneur Collaborative Center. Those are the resource agencies that have trained professionals that do business planning and technical assistance and financial planning for businesses. So again, one of the things you can do is help, help, help communicate how our businesses can grow. And it's not just the city of Tampa. It's, it's the metro area. We all have something collectively to offer. And, and also help us monitor what we're doing, as you're doing today. It, it's those, it's those intangible things, sir. Thank you.
No, thank you, and please let each of us individually and as a group know what we can do to help you. I want to be whatever kind of advocate I can be, and I'm happy, if you have something like Bridges to Business that you want me to post on my social channels or whatever, present, happy to do that. I mentioned the community leaders that are demanding change. They're going so far as to say that they're demanding that, that I, maybe they've talked to my colleagues about this, they're demanding that we stop accepting contracts, stop approving contracts that don't hit the minority criteria. And so that's coming. And so we've got to really take this seriously because the drumbeat's getting louder and louder to start rejecting contracts that don't hit the dark end. So thank you.
If, if I may, very quickly, what you're not seeing on a regular basis when, when it does occur are the contracts that we do reject and we declare as non-responsive to our MBE, SLB program. We've rejected contracts that have value of 30, 35 million, and we go through a protest and appeals process. And we do our due diligence and our audits, and knock on wood, the quasi-judicial process with a magistrate or hearing officer more often than not has sided with the city's position in declaring those contractors, you know, not in compliance with our program, not willing to include. So it's not perfect, sir, but we do do some of that. You, you don't see those. Yes, sir.
Thank, thank you very much. And, and I want to say, just in closing this, you know, I guess whenever these contracts do come up, maybe have that information, you know, for us to provide background and whatnot. I think that's something that's, that's important and just obviously from the sentiments expressed here, whenever contracts do come up and, and you're going to have council approve or, or reject them, just to obviously have that information ready. Kind, kind of like if Councilman Dingfelder or myself were attorneys, we go to a hearing, we, we have everything ready for any possible route that the hearing may, may take. So just for whatever that's worth. But we really appreciate your very detailed presentation and your hard work. It's, it's appreciated.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I, I appreciate the comments and your support. I really do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your work. Thank you so much. Okay, next we move to item number 13.
Good afternoon, Council. Kevin Quero, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. First, I'd like to take a quick opportunity to introduce Twanda Anthony. She's in the back. Twanda's been with us a little over 13 years, and she was recently promoted to the Urban Planner III position, which is the highest staff-level planner position that we have in our group. And I'm introducing you to her. This is your first glance because in the next cycle, she's going to start processing the privately-initiated amendments and start helping me work through these processes. That's one of her major assignments, so you'll start seeing more of her.
Who was that?
Twanda Anthony.
Who in the back?
Yes, yes. Highly professional, wonderful person. So, and she much deserved that promotion. The First Amendment that you received, there are two packets. This one is the one that was initiated Clear Channel with Todd Pressman as the agent. Mr. Pressman is here, along with representative from Clear Channel. This amendment deals with electronic billboards in our regulations. Outside of our regulations, there are two settlement agreements with two of the largest billboard companies that own the majority of the billboards in Tampa. Those settlement agreements deal with static signs. There's trade-off requirements, there's locational requirements, replacement, rehabilitation, reconstruction requirements. The code itself deals with conversion of those to LED or electronic billboards. These provisions before you, as a privately-initiated amendment, Clear Channel, represented by Mr. Pressman, is proposing to amend geographical limitations, so expanding the corridor Hillsborough from Veterans to Dale Mayberry is what the current code says. So on that corridor, they could potentially trade off a certain number of signs as, as stated in the regulation and place an electronic billboard within that segment. They're proposing-
And I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you for one second. I, I, I'm sorry, that never entered my mind. Was anybody here for public comment on item number?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's, that was my fault. On item number 12, I just have to ask that.
Carry on.
Thank you very much.
They're, they're requesting to expand that from the limit to Dale Mayberry to Nebraska along Hillsborough, and then adding Dale Mayberry, the segment from Hillsborough to Kennedy, and then Gandy to McDaniel Air Force Base, and then along Gandy from Dale Mayberry to West Shore. The document itself is eight pages long because it's the entire code section, but if you actually just go to page five, there's only two portions that are being amended. On page five of the document, in paragraph four, they are also requesting to increase the percentage of the total amount of signs they can trade off to cre, to create, I'm sorry, not to trade off, but to create digital billboards. So in the current regulation, it's a maximum of 5 percent of that single-owner billboards. 5 percent of their inventory can be converted. They're requesting to change that to 10 percent. And then no more than 10 electronic billboard signs can face FAP and FAI designated roadways. They're asking to change that to 16. And additionally, on the non-FAP, FAI designated roadways, looking to change from 5 to 10 percent and from 4 to 6 faces on those roadways. Those are the two sets of changes. This is a privately-initiated amendment, so this will move forward in the cycle to the Planning Commission. We are going to be hosting a staff public information meeting with the public, tentatively November 4th. The Planning Commission will be December 9th, and then the first and second reading will happen in December and then the beginning of January. Mr. Pressman is here to explain the amendment and answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Pressman? Any questions from Ms. Quell from council? Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members. Todd Pressman. I'm here today with Tom O'Neil with Clear Channel Outdoor. We're happy to be here today. We are seeking, requesting a bit of an expansion of what has been a great and very successful public, private, and small business partnership, of which 13 digital billboards have been put up in the city. Once those billboards are put up, there's many multiples of paper billboards that have to come down. This has removed tens of thousands of square foot, of feet, of paper billboards in the city. It's boosted for the first time entry of many small businesses to be able to use these type of advertising and has provided scores and scores of public, city event, and law enforcement advertising, which the company does free of charge. What would be allowed under the request today would be initially three to five additional digital billboards, potentially up to eight for Clear Channel Outdoor. That would then result in many square feet of paper, existing structures and paper boards coming down. It would add four major arterials in the city to allow. On top of that, there is layer after layer of layer of rules, regulations, distance measurements that require substantial distances for residuals for placement. So finding locations is very difficult. All of those regulation rules will be in place. And here's the critical aspect, Councilman. This has been a project that has been in the works since 2005. We have never received a single complaint to Clear Channel Outdoor or to the city on this program as it's moved through the city. I think that's an outstanding record and one that does deserve to be expanded to a, a degree. So to date, they've converted 13 faces. In regard to that, they've removed 53 separate billboard structures in the city, which is equivalent to 96 faces and 32,500 square feet of existing billboard faces that have come down. I think what's very unique, if you can go to the overhead, please, to make you aware, that Clear Channel Outdoor is involved with the Tampa Police, all the local police departments and sheriff's departments, the federal marshal's office, FBI, is involved with public emergencies and small businesses. This is just a very small example of the partnership with the city. You can see when there was a tragedy in City with Dante Morris, they converted every billboard from here to Orlando in seeking that suspect. They're involved with the federal marshal, sheriff's office, FBI. You might notice in this picture from 2001 that they were selected as Tampa Police Department Business Partner of the Year for the work that they did. That's the former chief of police there, now mayor. This is an example of some of the community work they do, and this is just a small piece of it. This is a great example of specifically the city of Tampa partnership involving their programs, including Share the Road, Downtown Tampa, the police again, leadership conferences, and again, some community support, and then just a small example of some of the small businesses that are, not only have advertised for a day or two on specials that are coming through. So in regard to having the test of time for an outstanding program that quite frankly has expanded throughout the Bay Area and very successful, we have come forward asking for your consideration to move forward a expansion of the program to allow additional digital billboards. Happy to answer any questions. Tom is here as well to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfelder?
Oh, I remember it well.
Oh, yes, yes.
But it was a good compromise. You know, it was lengthy litigation that just went on and on, and we got out of litigation with this compromise, and I think it, I think it's been good. I think the swap out, like you say, of paper signs for, for some digital is, is okay. And I think even Linda Solcena is probably happy with it. A couple of things. Number one, I didn't hear any mention of, quote, "the other company." Let me throw a couple of questions at you, and then you can answer them all, Todd. So that's number one. Number two is, on the locations, I don't have any problem with the quantities that you all mentioned on page five or six there. But on the, on the locations, I was pretty adamant back then to limit digital billboards and keep them away from neighborhoods. And that's basically why this ended up being written the way it is. If you all look at page, page one of this existing agreement, excuse me, the existing ordinance. Specifically, you guys are looking to extend on Hillsborough Avenue from the Veterans, you're looking to, to go east, past Dale Mayberry, all the way to Nebraska. I'm sure that you probably have a billboard or, or two, a location or two down that way. But now you're going into Seminole Heights. You're going, you're going through, through the middle of Seminole Heights on, on Hillsborough Avenue as you cross Highland and, help me out, Guido. Anyway. Yeah, this is Hillsborough Avenue. As you, so as you're traveling eastbound, you're, you're crossing Dale Mayberry. Dale Mayberry is currently your, your boundary, and you're going all the way to Nebraska, which means you're going through, through the Seminole Heights, through the good portion of Seminole Heights. Highland Central, right, thank you. Florida. I don't know where those bill, the subject billboards are, but all of a sudden, they're going to change from paper to digital? Yeah, I, I know Hillsborough is a busy street, but at the same time, if you, if you, if you're used to a paper billboard up there and all of a sudden it's a changing digital billboard, I'm a little concerned, you know, about the, the impact on a, a surrounding neighborhood. I don't know. I, I don't know where the specific location is.
The lighting, because of the lighting?
Yeah, yeah, the lighting and the changing of the words and that sort of thing. Yeah, yeah, the lighting and the changing of the words and that sort of thing. If that's near my house, and I can actually see it from my house, then that's going to bother me. But anyway, so that's, that's location number one. Location number two is the next line down, which says you want to expand it on Dale Mayberry to include now, well, I don't know what, I don't know what we've added there on Dale Mayberry. I don't know what it was. Did we not include, we didn't have any on Dale Mayberry previously, or what?
They're north of the stadium area.
The stadium area.
See?
The stadium area was included.
The previous ordinance didn't have Dale Mayberry on there?
It had just the stadium area included.
Is that, was that an FAP or an FAI stadium area?
That's correct, FAP.
Okay. So now we're adding the non-FAP area, which is Dale Mayberry from Hillsborough to Kennedy. I'm okay with that. Hillsborough to Kennedy is just, pretty much just commercial. But then you go down there from Gandy, on Dale Mayberry, from Gandy down to the base. And again, Mr. Carlson, you're talking about SOGS, and, and, and I don't know if they've had a chance to, to, for, for input on this, and I understand Ms. Quill's going to have some public outrage, but I, I just want to throw up some red flags there, that now you are going into a neighborhood, and whether or not they want or don't want digital advertising down there. And then the last portion is Gandy, basically along the new construction area of Dale Mayberry to West Shore, which is where we're, we're going double-decker on, on Gandy. Again, those folks are going to have to adjust to the new double-decker, and, you know, I don't, again, I don't know specifically where your signs are that you're looking at there. If it's right at the corner of Manhattan and Gandy, maybe it's not a big deal, but anyway, a little bit of my concerns. Again, I'm open for compromise.
Ms. Chairman, would you like to respond? Let me, let me give a short answer, and then Tom will answer. First of all, for the newer members, the boards go up, a message goes up, it's not allowed to move, scroll, flash, change. So there's no movement on the signs.
15 seconds.
Yep. Secondly, in terms of illumination, they all have a device that the board is lit up only on the ambient light, which means it has the little device that, as it gets brighter during the day, the board gets brighter. As it gets darker into the evening, it gets much darker. So there's not a illumination throw effect. And the last thing I'll say is, again, we had a long, many months discussion on distances, regulations, Mr. Dingfelter will remember that, and of course, Mr. Miranda will, that have worked. I'll say again, we have not received a single complaint since 2005. So the rules, regulations are going to remain the same. Believe me, we understand the sensitivity. I'll turn it over to Tom.
Let me just say real quickly, you, we intentionally went out of our way to keep them out of the neighborhoods.
Yep.
Okay, we said, put them on the interstate, put them on the, the big sections of heavy, heavy sections of Dale Mayberry and what have you, Hillsborough, what have you, but we, we really went out of our way to keep them out of the neighborhoods. And I just want to make, I'm, I'm a little concerned because both, both of these additions are now creeping into these two neighborhoods that I've just described.
If you will give the liberty for Tom to respond, please.
Of course. Thank you. Tom O'Neill, I'm VP of Real Estate with Clear Channel Outdoor, and handled this from the start, and Todd, as always, is very eloquent and provides good backdrop, and the business questions I can certainly answer. And Councilman Dingfelter, your history and knowledge of this, I think is welcome for this, this group, and your questions are legitimate, and I understand the concern. And I will say, as Todd mentioned, the lack of complaint comes from, let's just say, us being a good business partner of understanding where complaints could possibly come from. And unfortunately, the areas that I've asked for are broad stroke, and I think you understand that, as you did last time. And good catch on the extension of Hillsborough to Nebraska. One of my thoughts was, like, we can talk about the Dale Mayberry portion and going to Kennedy, the neighborhoods do not back up, you know, they're, they're wide, commercial strips that provide a buffer. So that, that's the good news. You're correct. As we creep into the Seminole Heights, now that I think about it, I think you're correct. I think crossing over the interstate line into that area gets us into Seminole Heights, when certainly I don't want to start anything of concern for that neighborhood. And let me put a pen to that road and take a look at, make sure that we have the proper buffers. And again, this is broad strokes. We've only added 13 locations, and the majority of those are on the interstate, I-4, 275. They're well spaced. It was a well-written ordinance, and I respect and appreciate your concern of continuing to protect.
On Hillsborough, I would argue, and I'll defer to Mr. Manaschakka, but that, that the river, once you cross the river, you're pretty much into some part of Seminole Heights.
Yeah. I would say we'll stay behind the river. That's, that's an easy move, and I, I absolutely completely understand, and I won't claim any naivety of not knowing specifically, but the thought is to keep it to where it is highly buffered for commercial. It is not there, you're correct.
And then on the south Dale Mayberry, the SOG section, south of Gandy.
Okay.
I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Carlson on that, and let him, you know, let, let him protect his own district in that regard. Whether or not it needs protecting, I'll, again, I'll defer to him.
You're in Long City.
Yeah, I know.
I love it, what a SOG is, man, you know, you'd explain that, you know?
South of Gandy. Proudly known SOG.
Add me to that list. All right. South of Gandy.
Councilman Manaschakka, within Councilman Dingfelter. Or Carlson, I'm sorry.
So touching on some points regarding what Councilman Dingfelter said, on Hillsborough, as you cross the river, is when you get into that, you leave the Wellswood area and you go into, it's River Bend to the north, Wellswood to the south. You cross the river, you get into Seminole Heights. You go into South Seminole Heights, and you get into Old Seminole Heights, depending on Hillsborough as a dividing line. Twenty-something years ago, when they widened Hillsborough, and there was all that construction in that area, there were homes and certain buildings. Many were demolished, some were relocated and moved, but I know that the Neighborhood Association, and this is, who's now a county commissioner, Pat Kemp, she was instrumental in that back in the 1980s, in protecting some of these structures and whatnot. And they fought for the wall that you see going up there, all the way to the interstate, almost to the interstate, to provide some kind of sound buffer, because Hillsborough is a very busy road. Before Dale Mayberry was Dale Mayberry, Hillsborough was a, was the main wide commercial corridor, back when my mother was growing up. So, anyways, getting to the point, once you cross the bridge, although it's commercial to the street on the south side of Hillsborough, those walls that are there, it's homes right behind it. So even though, and I need, you know, I, I wear glasses, and I'm careful when I drive at night and whatnot, the signs dim, and they're not as bright. They don't bother me, they don't distract me as I'm driving up Dale Mayberry, and I see the bright sign, and I'm trying to focus on the road. I don't get, you know, my focus is fine with my vision, but people that live there, there's one property, and this is not a digital billboard, but there's a property that was newly constructed at, on Florida Avenue just south of Hillsborough, and they have these bright LED lights. And when they come on, it illuminates, you know, that whole area where the houses are, the single-family homes. And one gentleman in particular says, even with the, the curtains drawn and everything, it's so bright, you know, at night, you've got to sleep with a mask. So that's it, that's my concern, but it's that section from the interstate to the river is where you have the residential right there that's closest to Hillsborough. Even with that sound wall, or whatever, the decorative wall that they put up, the, the light still may be too bright that, you know, it's going to be a distraction and a bother to those folks that live there.
Absolutely.
But the rest of Hillsborough to Dale Mayberry, it's just, you know, gas stations and post office and restaurants, and it's completely different, and the homes are so far back that it wouldn't really matter. But they didn't widen that part of Hillsborough back when I was a kid. They widened that section from, you know, through that Seminole Heights area, so that's the difference.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Carlson, I don't think there's going to be an issue. We've got about 11 minutes left for the 30, but I think we should be all right with that. Go ahead, sir.
I'll only take 10.
I'll only take 12.
Just a, just a couple of comments and a, and a, maybe a question. I'm a marketing guy, so I like, as a marketing person, to be able to use these. You mentioned small businesses, they're very valuable for small businesses, it gives them access to outdoor for the first time, it gives access to nonprofits. There are a lot of tools that are very valuable in this, and it gives you geo-targeting, really, through, through these. The two, Councilman Dingfelter's comments, you know, I, I just walked these neighborhoods south of Gandy, that's the SOG, and the, the houses are half a block or a block off the commercial, off Dale Mayberry. And so, I would, I, if I were you, I would, and Todd, I can talk to you about this, but if I were you, I would spend a lot of time with the neighborhood associations. The, the South of Gandy Neighborhood Association is very active, new president, very active. And then even Port Tampa, I just met with them a couple nights ago, and they see all these things happening around them, and it would be good to update them. I assume you're talking to McDill and the Expressway Authority, but even the, the one across Gandy, there's so much happening along there that I'm, I'm sure all the people north and south along there would want to know. The other question, though, is, besides the NIMBY issues, what, what other concerns do people have about these? Where do, where do you think the, the opposition will come from, if any?
The opposition previously was neighborhood associations, and we, we did meet with them. I mean, again, we had a much larger map than what we were, what we finished with, so it's very similar to the process we're in now. I, I would say, based upon your comments, and again, our desire to keep this from being inflammatory in any sense, I think we can reduce the ask on some of these locations and narrow it down. This is, it's been very successful from a marketing standpoint. Hillsborough Avenue is not the moneymaker that the interstate would be, so to be in the secondary neighborhoods isn't. Now, the industry, obviously, over time, may look at expanding as many places as we can be, but I think we've, to Councilman Dingfelter, you know, previous effort, I, I think the pencil being taken to the ask previously made it amenable to everyone and a win-win for the 10 years that they've been operating, and I think we can do that again. So I hear you loud and clear. I think the points are constructive at this point, and we can take a pencil to this and hopefully eliminate any of the neighborhood concerns moving forward.
Anything else?
Let's ask you a real, real quick question. The poster size ones that are in small neighborhoods, maybe this is a controversial question, but do, does anybody in the country do digital billboards for the smaller ones? Because those are really good for targeting.
Yeah, we've actually had one up at the old Piccadilly Cafeteria, Dale Mayberry and Fletcher is one, and we had one over in Pinellas County, 19 in Curlew, and they were not successful in this market. In Albuquerque, that's the only size that they have, and the advertising market took to them a little better, but unfortunately, the size difference between the 1448 and the 25 is, is pretty, pretty substantial when you're an advertiser. So, it wasn't quite successful.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Ms. Chairman, I do want to mention, just for full disclosure, so there's two companies that are involved with successful settlements. So whatever is approved, we come forward as Clear Channel Outdoor. Whatever comes forward would be applicable to Clear Channel Outdoor and the other company. Just again, for full disclosure.
Are you in a discussion with them? Are they on board with this?
No, they have favored nation ability inside of their settlement to, whatever we get, and for proprietary reasons, you know, no reason to disclose until we get initial. Once, once this comes out, they will be, but, you know, if they have a desire to add to this, then, then you'll hear from them as well.
Councilman Goode's.
Okay, I wish I cleared that up. So, all companies, we're looking at changing this for all companies. I mean, Outfront and all these other people, that, all part of that process.
Catherine.
Catherine Quill again. This is the city's regulation for electronic billboards. It applies universally to anyone that qualifies to put up an electronic billboard, period, regardless of company.
Thank you.
Can I give you a little, a little bit different answer?
Very brief.
One digital billboard requires a large number to come down, so a company would have to have a large number of billboards equal that square footage. And my understanding, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's only two companies that have, that have that ability. Is that correct?
Pretty much.
I wasn't worried about that. I was worried about making sure that all companies had the right to do whatever, and she's saying, under our policy, whatever it's going to be, everyone has that right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Is anybody here for public comment on item number 13? If so, please come forward at this time.
I do have the publicly initiated amendments, too.
Okay.
Just really quickly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
But my, my first cousin is general counsel for their competitor, Outdoor. He's, he's up in New York City, and we only talk like once a year at the holidays. I love him dearly, but, but he, but my relationship with him has no bearing, Mr. Shelby, on, on me proceeding to discuss and/or vote on, on this, this particular ordinance. If anything, I'm probably harder on the industry than most people.
Well, when the time comes, and it comes before you, I'll have the definite answer, but my understanding is that first cousins under state law and the city code, I don't believe, apply, but I'll double check.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. And you wanted to say something, Ms. Quill?
The private, or the publicly initiated amendments. This is the second document. Just briefly, City Council had a motion back in June. Mr. and Mrs. Hatch came forward, they had an issue with a neighbor, the skateboard ramp that was constructed. That spurred council to actually make a motion, which wound up turning into an amendment to the code, creating a definition for a skateboard ramp, as well as the regulations specific to the accessory structure itself. You should have received an email, I believe, this morning from Mr. and Mrs. Hatch, requesting that you actually move this forward. We sat with them, Ms. Wells came as well. We sat with them on October 9th and went through the regulations that were written at that time, went through all the different issues that they had, and we went, followed up with some additional research, which is included in the packet that you have. And we went out and looked at different companies. This is OC ramps in particular, went through the different types of half-pipes and quarter pipes that are built for skate ramps and backyards, all the way up to kind of more commercial sizes. And given even the write-up that they have in their, on their website and in their description, product descriptions, it made sense to do the limit to eight feet wide, 22 feet long, three and a half feet in height, as a standard, when it's accessory to a residential structure or use. And then on page two, non-residential structure or use, 16 feet in width, 30 feet length, five feet in height. And then the noise attenuation, we included addition of a solid fence, six feet in height along the entire length, when it's adjacent to a residential use. And then planting additional shrubs and trees, using sound dampening materials, insulation, rammed earth or similar methods to dampen the noise. So the thought is, these are also placed at principal structure setbacks. So in a residential setting, if you recall the one that was brought forward as, as the complaint, it was essentially sitting at the back property line along the fence line, and it was 28 feet long, and I believe over 20 feet wide. It's massive, essentially. This in particular, this regulation would require that it would be placed 20 feet from the rear property line on that particular residential district, so that it's set back from the adjacent property in the rear. It would also meet seven feet setbacks on the side, and then it would limit the size and add noise dampening, noise attenuation materials. And these are similar sizes, they're in keeping with what is out there in the industry being sold and made for home use, essentially. So this is what we're bringing forward based on the discussion with council and the public. And then pages two through eight are all cleanup items, essentially. The definition of cemetery, it's aligning it with the definition in state law, which is cited there on page two. And then pages three through eight are just all cleanup items, cleaning up the descriptions of the zoning districts throughout every section of the code where they're listed, and then referring to the new code sections, literally district by district, and cleaning up the listings and footnotes in the tables, dimensional standard tables and use tables that were incorrectly referenced. Some of these are actually publishing errors, but we're going to go ahead and put them through just to make sure that municipal code publishes them correctly. And those are the cleanup items. I can go one by one, or, you know, it's getting late. I can go one by one, or, you know, it's getting late. So I would ask that you transmit this to the city, to the planning commission.
Kathy, looking at your draft code as compared to the pages you gave us from the, from that vendor, it seems that we left out the, what they call the half pipe garage mini ramp at twenty-six inches tall, and I just wonder why.
The, let's see. I'm sorry, let me pull that one back up.
And before you answer that, if I may, Ms. Coyle and Councilman Dingfelder, I want to make sure, are all council members good for the next hour or so? I just want to make sure.
Hour, yes.
Okay.
You start at six or what? Six?
Start at four-thirty, just kidding.
Six.
Just making sure. Go ahead.
We got to take a five to break.
Yeah. So, correct me if I'm wrong, at the bottom of page one, it says, three and a half feet height is the maximum, the maximum height to, to, to intrude into those setbacks, but then this one I'm just talking about is twenty-six inches tall.
So with this one, I, I balanced between the quarter pipe and the half pipe because I found a lot of pictures and stuff too, and my husband's a former skateboarder also, so some personal knowledge of this. But these quarter pipe boxes that are built, these ramps that are built, they actually have wheels on the bottom, and they can be stored in garages. And you can read the description, I highlighted the language that explains that you can actually take two of them out and put them together, and then you've got a mini half pipe if you wanted to do it that way, because you have a more compact area to store them. Those are three feet, two inches for the four foot, six foot and eight feet. The garage is twenty-six inches, the garage mini ramp. However, with the half pipe at eight feet wide, on up to the sixteen feet wide, those are three and a half feet, which made sense actually looking at them and the way that they're built, and the angle that you needed for the slope. The other piece of that is, in our regulations for zoning purposes, we start at three feet where you actually have to meet a setback, three feet in height. So if you're under three feet in height, you don't actually have to meet the requirement for the yard, for a structure, for an element in your yard. So we, I stuck with three and a half just to balance it with what I was seeing as the, as the built standard.
My only concern, and I know perhaps it's much to do about nothing, let's hope that nobody else is as rude as, as that particular family was, but as long as we're doing this, to me, and I've never been a skateboarder, my wife would hope, I never will, but, but to me, it's, it's, it's the noise. It's, you know, I don't know why the height is so critical, but to me, it's the noise. And the noise of going back and forth and back and forth, whether or not it's a three foot one or a twenty-six inch one, which neither of which we've sort of regulated.
These are just the maximum permitted dimensions, if you were going to put one on a residential property. It couldn't be any larger than this. You could certainly change it to three feet. I went with the average of those specific designs that were at that width. You can go three feet. I wouldn't put twenty-six inches, because as I said, in our standard zoning regulations, we start regulating our setbacks at three feet in height. So if you wanted to change three and a half to three, that'd be our standard anyway.
Okay, well, I, I think that'd be a good idea, just to, let's just try and keep these things out of neighborhoods and be as, normally, I wouldn't say this, but just be as strict as possible, because I can't imagine living, living next to one or near one with that noise going on for an hour or two or whatever.
Anyone else? Councilmen and Councilman.
Yeah, I, I'm a very patient person. If there's birds chirping outside, that's fine. If someone's hammering in the unit next door, something on the wall, I'm fine. If they're using a saw, I'm fine. But the skateboard ramps, you know, these things, especially the, the husband and wife that came before us, and you're familiar with this, it is an intrusion of their privacy, just how they built it was, it was like a commercial structure right in the backyard. The way the neighbors acted, you know, no consideration whatsoever, they thumbed their noses at them, and, you know, they have no privacy whatsoever. The noise is that, you know what it sounds like? It's that whooshing sound, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, that all hours of the day, you know, that's just a bit.
It was also the proximity and the size on top of it.
Yeah.
The bigger it is, the more skaters you can have on it at the same time.
Sure, and they would sit on their fence and mock the neighbors. It was ridiculous.
Yeah. So just to remind you, you should have gotten an email from them actually asking me to push this one forward, because they actually like this language. They were in agreement with it, but we certainly can change to three feet, it's fine.
So what is the pleasure of council?
If she needs a motion, I'll, I'll ask her to modify that slightly to be three feet instead of three and a half.
I would second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Niskalko, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that covers everything, all the house cleaning items, the cemetery language.
Yeah, so all I need is a motion to transmit to the planning commission.
So motion to transmit.
And, and before Councilman Goode, you had a question, sir?
I didn't see the cemetery.
It was just to comply with state law.
The definition at the state level includes scattering grounds, and it includes, ours is limited to human remains. The state does not limit it to human. And there was a question whether or not you could do pet remains. I mean, pets are very important to people. And our cemetery definition also doesn't include, like I said, those scattering grounds for ashes. Ours is very limited. It's very strange the way it's written and outdated, so the, it was brought forward by someone out in the public, and I was like, you know, it does make sense to actually align with the state.
All the state law.
Correct. The state statute definition is actually included underneath this for reference, so it, it aligns with that.
Okay. Councilman Niskalko, I think you were making the motion, sir?
Yeah, move to transmit.
May I have a second?
Thank you.
A motion by Councilman Niskalko, I believe, a second by Councilman Goode. All in favor? Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
The question before the vote. Kathy?
Yes?
So I've, I've thrown up a couple of zoning issues. One of them was, there, there had been a request to treat the channel side FARs in the same manner that the downtown FARs were treated. I don't know if that made its way to your desk. And I know that we're, we're not dealing with it right this very, very second, but before we transmit, is that something that's cooking, or, or how do we get it?
Was that an actual motion? Because I've, I've got all the motions written down for different status boards and stuff.
All right, I'll tell you what, let's finish this vote, and then we'll get to it.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
We'll talk about it.
Okay, next.
She was gone already.
Next, we move onward to item number fourteen.
I didn't bring that one up, sorry. Cafe Coyle, planning, design and development coordination. This one was a little more open-ended. It was essentially city council discussing amendments regarding private storage warehouses and facilities and other issues in the channel district. Going back and listening to the discussion, it was during a rezoning case. I guess the thought was whether or not this should be a principal use, or should be allowed, or maybe there should be some modifications to the language. I did want to walk you briefly through how we got to where we are in the regulations. The, this is the current use table. Mini warehouse with the footnote twelve is a permitted use. I wrote the A next to it for part of our discussion. Mini warehouse as a standalone use is permitted. The footnote twelve refers to the design standards in twenty-seven two oh four. So originally, in two thousand nine, mini warehouse was not a standalone use. It was only allowed accessory, it was, it was allowed as a permitted use, straight permitted use, but it had to be accessory to port, port-related activities. This was added as a privately initiated amendment, and it was adopted in January two thousand nine, and they put performance criteria so that you could have it as a standalone, you could have it as a permitted use, not accessory, but these requirements essentially made it accessory. It's limited to upper floors of the building, has to be part of a mixed use, at least two uses. One has to be residential, may not exceed forty percent of the total footage, square footage of the project, integrated with the structural system of the building. It's allowed in all the sub-districts in the town district. The rental of the units did not have to be limited to the residence, but they were in the building, and they couldn't store hazardous materials, obviously. So that went in as a privately initiated amendment, and the, what I want to make clear to council is, when you look at the use table, this is what we have to balance with the land use regulations, the land use categories that we have, which may lead into the conversation you wanted to have, Mr. Dingfelder. The vast majority of the channel district, the land use category is RMU one hundred, regional mixed use one hundred. It's a hundred units per acre, it's a three point five floor area ratio. For general description, three point five means that is three hundred fifty percent of your land area that you can have in building area. This is also within the CBD periphery, that's also defined in the conference of plan. And the periphery itself is a ring around downtown geographically. If you're within that boundary, you have the potential to double your FAR up to seven in this particular area if you provide bonus, if you follow the bonus provisions that are in the code. That's the setup for that. In the table itself, when we're looking at allowing uses or not allowing uses, or setting restrictions, or guidelines, or parameters for uses, we also have to keep in mind what the land use category says, because it does describe a range of uses and intensities. And then we have to look at the use table itself and look at all the other types of uses that are allowed, so that we're not arbitrarily restricting uses that are similar intensity or similar character. Within the RMU one hundred land use category, that allows all the way up to, from residential through mixed use, all the way to intense commercial, which has an element of light manufacturing and some light industrial type uses. The history of the channel district itself is a mixed use, industrial, port-related, bringing in residential, and it's kind of a combined area by description even in the code. So you go through the use table, and you'll see some more of our intense uses, like vehicle sales and leasing is related to port-related activities, ware sale, warehouse and wholesale trade, port-related activities. Let's see. Open storage, transportation service facilities, and major vehicle repair, all related to port activities. However, the general commercial and some other intense uses, like micro brewery, principal use parking lots, places of assembly, which is the arena, or a theater, or it's wide scale of assembly uses, those are all permitted uses and not restricted just to the port. So when this went through originally in two thousand nine, with the restrictions that it was, had to be part of residential, it made sense to council at that time. There was a follow-up amendment, and this is the current code today, there was a follow-up amendment in two thousand sixteen, which added on lands within heavy industrial, because there are a couple pieces of heavy industrial land in the channel district up around the crosstown. And with that land use category, you actually cannot, you're restricted, prohibited by the land use plan to put residential on it, and you're allowed heavy industrial uses. So this was put in that C two and C three, which is it has to have residential as one of the components, and that it can't exceed forty percent of the building, those two were restricted out. And then if you're on the heavy industrial land use category lands, that you can do it as long as you follow the rest of the criteria. That was also a private amendment, which was put in two thousand sixteen. So that's the background of the code and what it requires. Now I'm basically interested to find out what it is that you guys were thinking you wanted to do, if you wanted to take it back to where it's only accessory to the building that it's in, as opposed to allowed to be rented outside.
Just make an opening statement, and then you could. There's a, there are a group of people who are pretty sophisticated about urban planning in the community who really, really hate these. They hate them anywhere in the city, but in particular in the channel side area. They hate any kind of storage units, even if they're, I think, nicely designed on the outside, they hate them. And I don't know if any other cities ban them or regulate them, but they feel very strongly that we should get rid of them and not, not allow them at all.
Well, you kind of tucked my thunder, sir. Councilman Carlson's right. I was going to ask in reference to, since we're discussing channel side, community leaders are saying these big storage units, they're not bringing a big economic impact to communities. They're not promoting jobs. And it's, and I think we have to look at how many we will allow, how close to a community will, will allow, you know. I, I think that we've got to look at the whole system of the, the storage buildings, small units as a whole, as it relates to the city, because it's starting to become a problem where they're butting up to communities or in residential areas.
Thank you.
Going back to that zoning, that particular zoning, and I won't get into it in particular, but I do recall, and I'm sure everybody here does, that, that neighborhood was very, very adamant, they were very upset that the code just allows it, even though there are design criterion standards, but regardless, that we were told by legal that it's allowed as a matter of right, you know, as long as they meet those standards, and then they argued that they met the standard, blah, blah, blah. That's, that's, there was the, the genesis of this motion, was after all of that, and the community input we received that, those nights, it became very clear that this is quite a different channel side than it was ten years ago. You mentioned two thousand nine. And there's very few port-related activities, except, you know, with the cruise ships, I guess, which would not involve more mini storage. The heavy industrial area that you described, if it's, if it doesn't allow residential, and it's really up there to the north end, then maybe we can carve that out and leave them alone, because maybe that is a logical place, butted up under, under or around the, the expressway for some type of mini storage. But in regard to down in the residential area, I think they made a very compelling argument, you know, that this is not a great use of, of this very urban space. And in regard to the, the other areas of town, I, is another question for another day that probably needs to be addressed. But in regard to, you know, this channel side issue, that's where I was coming from with that motion.
So just to quickly recap, to put it in context, because in comparison to the storage facilities in other parts of the city where it's a hundred percent storage, that is the use, I just want to.
By the way, do you allow it downtown?
Air-conditioned storage is allowed downtown, yes. Not mini warehouse, but air-conditioned storage.
What's the difference?
Mini warehouse doesn't have to be air-conditioned.
Yeah, no climate control to climate.
Trust me, if you're in the storage game, you know the difference. Go into forty-six, forty-seventh, you'll see mini warehouse, old style, single, yeah, it's just different, so. But.
Well, it's interesting that we're just, just differentiating between channel district and downtown in regard to this reg, where frankly, if I took somebody from Omaha, plopped them into downtown near some of the residential, and plopped them over there by channel side and some of the residential, they're not going to say, oh, this is different.
Well, I keep in mind too, this, as you said, is ten years old. And in context, as, as the channel district from the beginning, its original inception with the plan and then morphed, it was industrial.
Yep.
Morphing into a mixed use and so on.
The vision changed.
Yeah, so in the channel district, and these are actually similar to the downtown regulations, except that it's air-conditioned storage downtown, is that it is limited to forty percent of the overall building, and the storage itself has to be on upper floors, so it can't be on the first floor. So you wouldn't have a U-Haul or extra space storage building like on Hillsborough where it's a hundred percent. It has sixty percent of the building is occupied by something else. It has to be in a mixed use building with two uses, and one of the uses has to be residential. So there will be a residential component in the channel district in the building, this is just another use that's in it.
I think the other, the other part that they complained about was the, the traffic and trucks and, and U-Hauls and, and small streets, tight streets and that sort of thing that this could generate. You know, I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of the messenger on this one.
Right.
I don't spend a lot of time in, in channel side per se, but we sure heard them loud and clear at that meeting, so.
The, the, you know, council could consider changing some of the, the dimensional area requirements, percentages.
I guess, I guess what I'd rather do, since we don't have to do anything today, is, is ask, send, send one out there to the neighborhood, because they have two very strong organizations out, out there, the CAC, and then there's another one that I can't remember the name of, but send them out, send, you know, ask her kindly to go out to those two, two neighborhoods and association. and associations and, and get their feedback.
I was talking to Rob Rosner earlier when he was here, he's been working pretty closely with them, too.
Yeah, I saw Rob, too. Rob's, yeah, right, Rob's intimately, intimately familiar with all those folks, and, and let's get their input and see where we go. Maybe just come back with a report whenever you feel appropriate.
We can do some additional research.
Well, that would, that would be my motion, is to, I won't put a time on it.
Okay.
But just come, I, I trust you, and just come, y'all go back and out in the community, come back and, and give us your report on what you think might be appropriate.
Okay.
We have a motion from Counselor Dinkfeld. Second, Counselor Dinkfeld, any discussion? Just real quick, there's a gentleman named Mr. Lewis from the Channel District-
Mm-hmm.
-who's started down there in the nineteen sixties, and one of his concerns when he came before council was, you know, we work so hard over the years to pull away from this warehouse district idea of what it was to a neighborhood, because it's changing so much with Vinick and everything beyond that whole area. So I can understand their frustration. And then another local group, very active on social media, you know, it's a lot of young people that, you know, they, they're, they're very passionate about, you know, proper city planning and whatnot moving forward, and smart cities and smart growth and whatnot, and storage facilities, no matter how it's percentage-wise, it has to be some other use, whatnot, they don't want that. They want a legitimate, true live-work-play, and storage units don't, don't particularly fit into that. So I can understand the frustration, but anyways, we have a motion from Counselor Dinkfeld, or a second from Counselor Dinkfeld, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. So that concludes number fourteen, and we are on our final item, number fifteen, regarding creating a reentry ordinance for the city. Brought to you by Counselor Dinkfeld, if you'd like to start the discussion.
Yeah, let me say a few words.
Sure.
Gentlemen, you know, you all have been living in this city for a while, you've all been on the campaign trail, this last session, and you've heard concerns of multiple citizens about housing being a factor. Folks who are in their senior years, who've had a past indiscretion for almost thirty-something years, still can't get into an apartment, still can't get into a rental place with landlords, you've heard about the workforce, you've heard about some of our contracts that we give out, folks still not being able to get on the workforce, even with our city employment, when I hear people who've applied and say, I didn't get hired because of a red light ticket, or a DUI, I was thirty years old, I'm hearing that constantly, especially about this DUI issue that people have multiple years ago, and people aren't even planning on driving or using a city work truck. Just some of the things that I'm hearing, and I've, I've gone abroad and I've heard other cities have already implemented policies and practices, second chance ordinance, some people call them, in reference to making sure that they're fair housing, putting limitations and making sure landlords and management companies are, are putting these astronomical years and days on people to, to, to get housing, and also the workforce. And I just look at our workforce in the city, and I just believe that when a person applies for the city workforce and they're denied, they should be given an opportunity to, to, to be told why they're denied, and we should have some type of process in place to where we can send them to an outsourced place for a reentry program, to where we have a criteria, we give that particular outsourced place to, that person can go, get some training, come back with a certificate, be able to apply to the city workforce, be put on a list, and eventually be able to get onto the city workforce when something comes available. We have to be an inclusive city and be able to make sure that folks can be able to have a sustainable life with benefits, and be able to go to work, and be able to have housing. So that's why I asked that city staff and, and legal come back to me and give me some information, give me some details, some structure to possibly creating a second chance slash reentry ordinance for the city of Tampa, to show that we're an up-and-coming city and we're moving forward to help people in their daily lives.
All right, thank you, Counselor Dinkfeld. And I mentioned it earlier, I believe in forgiveness and second chances. I knew a gentleman in college who was arrested in two thousand six. The charges were dropped, nothing happened, he had to pay five thousand dollars to an attorney, in the end, you know, he was not even found innocent, that was it, they dismissed the case. And anytime he applies for employment, he has to answer, they ask him, have you been arrested? He doesn't live in Tampa, but he has to explain everything, tell the whole story, whatever. So that follows him thirteen years after the arrest. You know, we only live life once, and we have one opportunity, we have many chances throughout life, but we shouldn't be, people shouldn't be demonized because they made a mistake once, they may have gotten a DUI, they may have, whatever, whatever the, you know, the, the crime or the charge may have been, but, you know, people go to jail, they serve time, they, they do their sentence, they complete it, that's not the end of everything. I mean, they should be allowed other opportunities in life. I don't believe in revenge and getting even, I believe in offering people new opportunities and eliminating the hurdles and the obstacles that are in place, and we see this throughout the entire country. And I'm glad that Councilmember Gudes brought this up, because this is very important, not just to lower income, but to everybody, because you could be rich and get arrested, you could be poor and get arrested, you could be college-educated, get arrested, whatever it is. I mean, we're, we're not, no one's immune to it. So I'm glad that this conversation has come up. Were you going to present on it, sir?
Well, I was here for, for questions. I think originally it was legal.
So we were all young and foolish, and some people might have even mooned in college, but we won't go there.
Never did.
Good afternoon, Andrea Zelman, Legal Department, and, and we don't really have a presentation prepared, we've done a lot of research, we, we were looking forward to this dialogue, just to get a better understanding of what it was that council wanted us to look at. I would note that in, we already have in our code what is called the ban the box ordinance in section twelve dash one twenty-eight Criminal History Screening Practices. And we don't ask someone at the outset in their application whether they have any criminal record, however, the city does reserve the right to do a background check, consistent with whatever job it is that someone's applying for, and, because obviously with some jobs, certain criminal offenses are more relevant than with others. But I would note that the code does require, to, to one of the comments that was made, that if someone is, if the city determines that a background check makes someone ineligible for the position, the city is supposed to notify that person and give them an opportunity to respond and consider any additional information provided in writing. So there is some process. I'm not, and perhaps Mr. Swain is more familiar than I with how that, that works, but there is some process in place. But I think what I'm hearing is that you would like something more, and we can certainly look at what other cities and counties are doing. We, we weren't able to find anything in particular to date, but we're happy to continue to look. But again, if there's something in particular you'd like us to look at, please say so.
You, you mentioned ban the box, and I, I'm glad we do have that, but that's just a small caveat, and I, I've been around a long time, and you can have the ban on the box all day long, and, and, and I'd ask that person, but once they get in the door and sit down to the, in that seat, there's a different process that's, that's taking place. So, you know, you have that little caveat to Dingle, you know, that you don't ask certain questions until you get in, in there, but then, once you get in there, it, the, the, the street name, it, it really flips the script at that particular point. So I, I think we have to really look at that as well. My main focus to make sure, I, I'm looking for what we can't do, I'm looking for what we can do for our citizens, and I'm looking to make sure that we can look at housing as, as, as number one. We have to be able to put some kind of criteria in our city to show that we're the driving force, you know? People talk about homeless, but you know, there are a lot of families, not people on drugs or alcohol, but just single moms or single families that their dad made a, created a small mistake, and he can't be with his family, his wife and his children, in that apartment, and he, and something maybe he had fifteen, twenty years ago. So we've got to be able to put things in place to make sure that our housing programs here, or our housing guidelines for our city, are making sure we are inclusive and making sure these long times, I call life sentences on people's lives, don't hurt them and along with their families, that's what's been happening. As far as the workforce, I know in our contract, that's number two, making sure that when we're giving out contracts, that we have a system in place to where we're making sure that our contractors who we're, we're giving all these dollars are hiring people who pass convictions. That, that has to happen. If we're giving out multiple money to people for work, they should be hiring people, and there should be a process in place. And I believe our HR process, uh, department needs to look at some kind of process to where if they, if, if they're not meeting the criteria, there are other several outsourced reentry programs that the HR could possibly send some of these folks to, have a criteria for the city, to where they can go to that program, they get a city, a certificate from that program, saying they've certified, met the city guidelines, and at, at some point in time be able to come back, apply, and get hired for a job.
Good afternoon, Mike Swain, Employment Services Manager in HR. Just to speak to a, a couple of items that, that you've noted, we, we do have a process in place currently where there is forgiveness, if you will. There are established timelines where, like any other employer, we want to make sure that, you know, if there's a rehabilitation period necessary, then, you know, it, it's been established where we give those individuals second chances. When it comes to something like a DUI, a couple of years ago, we revisited that, and I think the initial topic came from a council member, where it's no longer held against someone who is not going into a driving position, however, if it's a driving position, there's a five-year wait to make sure that individual maintains a clear record. So if it's a non-driving position, if the individual applies and they've had all their fines taken care of, they can be considered for a non-driving position, they will pass background, no issues. All right? So we do have that in place now.
The red light, the, the red light cameras, I'm hearing that we, we, some folks call my office in reference to that.
So for a driving position, we allow three moving violations within a five-year period. So if an individual is applying for a driving-related position, if they exceed a moving, three moving violations, then yes, they would be disqualified until that fourth one dropped off. And red light cameras do fall into that moving violation category.
Yeah, I'd be, I guess I'll get in trouble, I, I got-
Now, when, when it, when it comes to established programs that we can refer an individual to, that, you're right, the city doesn't have anything. Certainly, myself and my team, when we run across an individual, you know, we, we realize they're very motivated to work for the city, then, you know, we'll refer them to temp agencies and things of that nature, just to give them some type of guidance, and give them some motivation and encourage them to not give up. The city is certainly a place that we like where you work, once you, you know, allow a little bit of time to go by, so this ticket drops off, or you fall within our criteria, we'd love to have you reapply.
I think we got to do better, Mr. Swain.
I understand.
I think we got to do better. Times have changed. I was just looking at the internet the other day with Capital One and say they've got to change their policies, because they realize that they have a workforce that they've got to get employ, employees, and they've got to change some of their criteria as well in their hiring practices. And if Capital One is saying they can do that, then us as a big city, we got to look at some of our hiring practices, and also looking at some programs to when people don't, when people fall into that crack I talk about, that we're able to automatically send them someplace that they can be able to get certified and be able to come back with their, with, with, with a timeframe and say, we can put you on the list, and when something comes available, you can be able to apply, and possibly, if you meet that criteria, get on the workforce. That's what I'm looking for, Mr. Swain.
I understand.
So I'm hoping that we can do that. Also, as relates to housing, it's very critical, and again, with contracts. And I keep saying contract is a big issue, all this money that we, this council has just enacted to, to get things done around here, we've got to employ people and give people opportunity. So that's why I'm looking for legal and staff to come up with some type of ordinance plan that deals with workforce, contracts, and housing, so we can implement some for our citizens, so they can know that this council is working for the people, to give opportunity.
All right, more than willing to work with legal and the administration to try and build something.
Uh, Ms. McCleary, I see she's there.
The cape.
Superwoman.
The superwoman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to tell you about this. I, I went to, I went to a fabulous event last night, and I was going to mention, but since, she, she scolded me, she said, you left before I got my award. I said, well, I didn't see your name on the big program for an award. She said it was a special award they gave. So two of our employees out of the Housing Division, Ms. Trina Gaston Garner, won the award last night, and the award she got was for the, the real estate consultant, from the book man.
Education, real estate education.
It was the education. And we had a, another employee who was also nominated as a finalist, was Ms. Latasha Hicks, was also a part of that. So I'm, I'm happy, but then I found out that our superwoman got a superhero award at the end, and-
And I was presented with this.
And she's wearing her cape today. This was last night at Tom and Tru Works, the, the Housing and Education Alliance, Ms. Sylvia, who runs that organization, she puts on this fabulous Oscars or Emmy event with the nice trophies and big gala, and it was very nice, and they recognized different categories for housing, real, real estate, relative to who's doing the most, as housing goes, and affordable housing in a city, I think Orange County won that one, and I, we will win that one, but we're going to get it next year.
We got it last year, that's the only reason they got it from us this year.
All right, all right then. So it was a fabulous program, I wish more of my colleagues would have been there, but they gave me an invite, I went, and I'm sorry I missed your, your performance last night, but congratulations to you anyway.
Thank you.
And your staff. And looking forward to this weekend. But again, on, on a housing note, we've talked about this before, it's nothing new, the challenges we have, and I know, and I don't know if you have the actual numbers of how many families are displaced because they can't get housing because of convictions? Do you have any kind of numbers on that?
I do not have those numbers with me. I do know that it is a large number. So when we talk about chronically homeless, part of what makes up the chronically homeless, a large portion of it is felon, people with felony convictions, as well as people with mental illness. So we can actually house those with mental illness, it's just keeping them housed. We run into a lot of barriers when it comes to people with criminal backgrounds, and so through our Fair Housing Office, we are doing education of landlords, so that they understand they should not be looking at, they should not have a box and look strictly at criminal background without taking it into context.
So we need to put something in place, then it seems like, because if you're saying you're educating and telling them that, and they're still not doing it, then I think it's time that we have to be the enforcer to do something about that, because I hear that all the time. And when I go out in communities, I can't get a place, I'm looking at this person, this elderly person, who's, who's crying, who's still living with other family members, because they can't have their own. I like living alone, so I can understand how somebody would want to have their own. So we, we've got to do something about that. So I'm, I'm, I'm hoping after the other gentleman talked, that we can start working on that process and get a time date that we can bring back a ordinance to put in place for those three items, those three subject items.
Thank you, sir, Counselor Dinkfeld.
Thank you. Counselor Dinkfeld, good, good conversation, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With, with all due respect to whoever drafted this chapter twelve dash one twenty-eight, if, you know, ban the box, they didn't do a whole, a whole lot in terms of making real progress, I don't think, because, as somebody mentioned earlier, as I'm sitting here looking at the actual text, all it does is eliminate it from the first portion of the process, that you can walk in the door and fill out the application, but if you get any further, it, it appears pretty obvious that the city is going to do a comprehensive background check, and, and who knows what happens after that. The, I think if we want to truly ban the box, I think we need to be more explicit in terms of saying what, what we expect as a council, as a policymaking body, you know, that with, you know, let's say five years, if five years go by, and then your record's clean, you know, that, that the city, the city can't hold it against you, if that's our intent. But I think we just, if, if we're serious about this, I think we have to, we have to beef it up a little bit, because that's not what I'm seeing in this chapter twelve dash one twenty-eight through one thirty-one. Ms. Elman, so you've done a little, a bit of, some research, a lot of research, some research. What are you seeing other communities doing on this issue of city employment or municipal employment, number one? Number two is, has anybody taken the, the next step in terms of trying to address the same issue in the private sector within the municipality? You know, that, to me, you know, that, that would be the next logical step if we really want to make something different happen. And then going to the third question, which what Mr. Gudes brought up about housing, did your research go into, into that housing issue?
To be honest, when we started this research, I was a little confused about what we were looking for. So to date, I haven't found anything yet on how other cities and counties have these sort of measures in their hiring practices, but we certainly can look into that. I forget what your second question was, and on the third question with regard to housing, we do have Ms. McCleary and Rachel Peterkin of our office here to talk a little bit more about that, but what was, I- But what was, I apologize.
Second, what's the private sector? You know, it could, could, do we even have the power or ability to address the same issue in the private sector as related to employment? That'd be sort of ban the box for everybody. And then, and then the third question, yeah, as related to housing, both pub- actually, I guess there's four questions. The second, the third and fourth question would be on the public housing side, and then, you know, public, I'd say, maybe, you know, housing that we're involved in or anything like that. And then the next level would be the private, the private sector rental housing, you know. So anyway, I guess, you know, anybody can make a motion. I just think we need to research our opportunities, what opportunities we have, and let you come back, and then when we have a full board and a little more time to discuss all four of those issues, to see where we wanna go with them.
Okay.
Anything else?
And I would also add, some of these issues touch on the work that our Human Rights Commission does as well. And if you have any questions, Rachel's prepared to talk to, about that as well.
It'd probably be enforceable by the, you know, by those same groups, I guess.
Anything else, gentlemen?
You said she's with Human Rights Division? Or she's the attorney for the?
Oh, go, come up, ma'am, if you'd like.
Hello. I'm with the City Attorney's Office. I'm an Assistant City Attorney. And right now, I'm supporting Vanessa's.
Ma'am, if you could please state your name.
Oh, sorry, Rachel Peterkin's.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I support the Vanessa's Division, which does housing. And also within her division is our Office of Human Rights.
Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
Well, before I make a motion, Mr. Bennett, did you come join us on this issue specifically? Or is this just coincidence?
No, I used to, went to that show, we need Councilman Seck.
All right.
I see how it is.
Oh, yeah, really?
That's funny. Well, in, I guess in closing.
We're just glad you didn't have it out there in the audience.
I'll give you a high five.
Must've been a long day.
Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion on those?
Yeah, sure, sure. And let, and let me, if I may, before that, if I may, sir, just a couple thoughts on this. This is an idea that I strongly support. I know there's a lot to be worked out with regards to legal issues, et cetera, et cetera, and whatnot. But I think the basic idea that people deserve second chances and compassion and mercy, and that the city ought to be taking a, an aggressive stance of solidarity and an example with that. I support that. You know, in the city, there are so many wonderful charities and different organizations that the city can partner with, I believe in a constitutional way 'cause many of these are religious, like A. Brown Ministries, for example, that just does a tremendous job reaching out to all people regardless of their religious faith and to help restore people, restore them emotionally, spiritually, economically, and make the kind of difference that they need to make. You know, we could also think about maybe, and, you know, the city having potentially some sort of a training program for ex-felons who maybe wanna come on and have training for something to put on their, on their resume, for example. You know, something of that nature, or encouraging contractors to do the same. I know I mentioned briefly before the issue of apprenticeships, something that can be used for a wide variety of folks, to give people that pathway and that ladder to the middle class. So I think there's a lot of different tools that we have in our toolbox that can promote compassion and basic human decency on this issue. So I think that's important, you know. And sir, I think you wanted to make a motion, sir? And you made.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, before you do that, I don't see anybody present.
Oh, public comment, thank you. I keep on forgetting. Is anybody here for public comment? And I'm number 15. If so, please come forward. Okay. Thank you, sir. A motion, sir. Good luck.
So those are great comments, Mr. Chairman, as well. And you reminded me, when Connie Burton was up at the podium earlier today, she spoke to the fact that, you know, it's great that we got crime down, but hand in hand with that is we incarcerate a lot of people. And I don't think, you know, we can't solve that, that part of the criminal justice system sitting up here, especially today. But I think that in regard to trying to help on the back end, and really, it's kinda hand in hand with what the, what we did as a state, what was it, two years ago, in terms of restoration of rights, constitutional amendment that passed. And sixty-something percent of the state voters agreed that we should restore people's rights. Because as, as we know, especially if they're non, you know, nonviolent felons and that sort of thing. So anyway, with that said, I just request that staff address those four issues. Uh, what the four issues were?
Housing?
Yeah, so it's housing, public and private, and the checkbox.
Ban, 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 ban and box. Also.
Public and private.
Workforce housing. Contracts.
Do we do it on contracts? We don't allow felons?
In fact, what I, what I wrote down was housing, city contracting, the city's own hiring.
Correct.
And anything the city can do with regard to private sector hiring practices.
And also private sector housing practices. And, and, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the housing authority is, and they're probably ruled by fed, federal laws and stuff like that, I would think. I don't know.
Vanessa tell it.
So when they changed the law, they actually made it so that the housing authorities could no longer discriminate. There was a policy that housing authorities could not rent to anyone that had a criminal background.
That changed, right?
Yes, that changed.
So that'd be a nice place, a nice place to look at as for guidance.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Goode, I would assume.
Let's give him time, so I would say like February, uh, that's a good month, I mean, February twenty-seventh.
We gotta work something?
Yep.
Thirty a.m.?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Goode. All in favor?
Ms. Chairman, can we?
Yes, sir.
Can we have that, the first item for the workshop?
Let's do it.
That way, some people wanna come. They don't have to wait like this evening.
I agree. I agree. 'Cause that's, we will likely have a lot of passionate people on that issue. We wanna hear from them.
Yes.
So we would have that directed as item number one.
And then, and then, if I may, just so the record is clear. After ceremonial, so you'll transpose, 'cause you have an item presently set for nine o'clock. You'll move that to nine thirty then, to make that the second item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, there you go.
Did we vote?
Yes, we did. We did. Okay. Next, reports, motions, et cetera. Councilman Dingfelder.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna, to sing, I'm the Wanderer by Dion, but I thought I'd spare you guys. Okay. In seriousness, let's see, I've got a motion that, a motion respectfully requesting that the administration find some money in the budget to buy the bike lights that are needed by TPD pursuant to that discussion that was many hours ago. Yeah, when the chief, when the chief said, "Well, we don't have enough money and we don't have enough lights", that was kinda like, "Really? Well, let's find a few thousand bucks and get these people lights, and especially young people."
And it's made a difference. You saw the numbers.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it reduces the stops, the reason for stopping and everything.
Totally, totally.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Escalco. All in favor?
Any opposed?
The next one, and I'm trying to be sensitive to Chief Dugan, that we would continue to have an annual report on bike stops, but, but we would modify it just to be a written report annually in the first regular meeting of October, including geographic information. And then that way, if we get the written report and we have questions about it, we can always call them back.
A good compromise. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Goode. All in favor? Any opposed?
And then finally, Ms. Coyle indicated that really to do a comprehensive educational workshop to council, that she might need up to about an hour to really teach us about the tree code and how it works, and how it got to where it is. And also, she'd be, hand in hand with that, she'd be reporting to us with the numbers. She said the numbers aren't there yet, but eventually she will have the numbers. So I would request in that February, what was it, Marty, the twenty-seventh?
You want the February workshop?
February twenty-seventh workshop as item number three, ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock.
That we would hear from Ms. Coyle about the tree code and get a report to us on the, on the trees that have been taken because of the new ordinance or under the new ordinance. I'd also like her to compare that to trees in the prior year. So we have a benchmark, and then we can look and see what's happening under the new ordinance. So, you know, like last year and next year, or something like that. And then, and then also, if legal allows us to talk about it at this point in February, to, to discuss the statute and give us the tree numbers lost due to the statute.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Escalco. Yes, sir.
I believe that, is that, is that a House Bill, eleven fifty-nine? I have the number right. But I just wanna know if it's referenced. It's eight.
Yeah. Bless you, bless you.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
If I can.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, just one more thing. Councilman Dingfelder mentioned that an hour he thinks would be required. Did you want that set for an hour? And then the next one wouldn't come in at ten thirty, but you wanna make it eleven? You just wanna have to set that every half hour.
Yeah, yeah, let's set it for an hour. Yeah, I mean, I don't.
How about just in parentheses, just set it for an hour?
Sure.
Don't remind us.
Calendar, yes.
Let's do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Goode, anything, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Shelby, I'm not sure. I know we made a motion at the CRA meeting for that Fair Oaks to come back on in December. And I guess Sandy sent a message to my office saying that we needed it for December twelfth. So I don't know if I can make that motion, make sure to put on there.
May I ask?
Is there, oh, I see, it's on here, the timeline of our community.
Redevelopment session?
Right, it was supposed to be for, uh,
Oh, I see, that was a CRA issue for December. And it looks like that has to be corrected from December fourteenth to December twelfth. My suggestion would be that you, are you able to do that now? If it's a motion of the CRA to correct the CRA date?
It's a Scrivener.
It's a Scrivener's error. So it's a Scriv-, so would it be?
We have to make a motion to amend it because it's not what.
Or make a, yeah, it already written out for me, so I'll make a motion to amend previous motion I made regarding the needs assessment for Planned Supervision for Fair Oaks Park. It'll be presented at the CRA meeting on December twelfth, twenty nineteen.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Escalco. All in favor? Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Yes, it's, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Escalco, anything, sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I guess it's a retroactive motion here, but I presented a commendation October twentieth, this Sunday, for the Taste of Latino Festival. It was a last-minute thing. I gave it to them. And I'm here to ask for forgiveness and approval for the, that commendation.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Escalco, a second by Councilman Goode. All in favor? Any opposed? Twenty Hail Marys.
Thank you very much, Father. And I'd like to make a motion to present a commendation to the Flavor of West Tampa. Event is gonna be November tenth.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Escalco, a second by Councilman Goode. All in favor? Any opposed?
And then the last one is, I'd like to make a motion that on November twenty-first, we present a commendation to Senator Arthenia Joyner for her fiftieth anniversary, I believe, of becoming a member of the Florida Bar and all that. So I'd like to bring her here, and we're gonna have some special guests that day. I believe Senator Janet Cruz will be joining and some others. I'll find out closer to the date, November twenty-first at nine a.m.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Escalco, a second by Councilman Goode. All in favor? Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Okay. Councilman Carlson, sorry.
Regarding the boat issue from this morning, I'd like to make a motion that staff come back to us with a proposed ordinance language regarding limiting overnight parking of boats in non-motor vehicles.
And do you have a date?
Can we do it on January ninth? It looks like there's not that much.
Is it just on residential streets, or is it in general on?
Yeah, on residential streets. So they'll come back to us with, with a proposal, and then we can discuss it then.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Escalco, and somebody yelling outside, I think. All in favor? Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Yeah, regarding the leaf blowers, maybe I should make this two different ones, or you can tell me if you wanna combine them. I would like the same thing, just for staff to come back and recommend to us, you know, proposed language to limit the hours of operation for leaf blowers similar to the construction hours. And the second one would just be to, to clarify the language or strengthen the language related to blowing leaves on the street.
Second, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Escalco. All in favor? Any opposed?
And the date for that was?
Can we do January ninth?
January ninth.
What was the first motion?
Over now.
It sounded like one motion with two subjects.
Yeah.
Yeah, what was the motion before that?
The boats, overnight parking of boats.
Boats on the street.
And then, what, was it just to study it, or?
They'll come back with proposed language, and then we can debate and discuss it then. You wanna vote against it?
No, I'll leave it.
You didn't vote for it, yeah. You just voted to hear it. And then, one more quick, or maybe two more quick ones. The Tree Trust Fund, I don't know the status of it. A lot of people in the public are asking for it. I'd like to have staff come back and, and give us an update on what happened with the Tree Trust Fund audit and let us know how the funds are being used.
When would you like that, sir?
Can we do that on December nineteenth? Doesn't have much. It's just before Christmas. But otherwise, we could do it in January.
How does that day look?
December nineteenth, as of this calendar.
It's a lot. Oh, great. Okay, there you go. You got it. Any seconds on that? Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a half-hearted second by Councilman Goode. I'm joking. All in favor?
May I just ask you with regard to that, who from staff do you want? Is that, is that?
She said parks, right?
Parks. Is that, is that part of the motion? Parks?
Sure, please, thank you. The last thing, you reminded me in talking about the, you know, people with past criminal records. Remember, we almost included that in the Charter Review Commission, and it was taken out by some of our colleagues. But it reminded me that there are a lot of things in the charter that we added that we haven't addressed.
That's correct.
And, I mean, one of them, one basic one, is that we required city council to designate two types of sensitivity training for all employees of the city at least once a year. And we haven't done that yet. We haven't designated yet. So I don't know when the soonest we could have, but that's something that by charter, to stay within compliance of the charter, we need to do ASAP. So I'd like to pass a motion for HR to come back and, and give us a recommendation as to what kind of training programs we should implement to stay in compliance with the charter amendment.
And if I may, 'cause I, I had this heard last year, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, for, for that, are you looking at just HR or police and fire? In other words, all city employees?
It's all city employees.
Charter says all city employees.
Okay, 'cause if my memory serves me right, you needed somebody from police and fire. I mean, just, just to have your office look into that. That's all.
Okay.
And the date for that, did you more than?
What's the soonest that we could? We, we're, we. The charter amendments were approved on May first, so I don't know, legal would have to give us advice. I don't know whether that.
And that's, and that's a question that I have not spoken to Mr. Johnson about, I hope he's open to that. But there were subjects within the charter that required action to implement.
There were also anti.
Something that Mr. Torito, I know, was familiar with. So I don't know whether you wanna report from, from legal on that subject matter of the implementation of the charter changes?
Yeah, I mean, separately, one, we need a feedback on these training programs because that's something we, the city council has to take action on. Did we pass a motion on that?
No, you're not yet. You didn't vote yet.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that HR, police, fire, whomever necessarily, come back and tell us how we can get, be in compliance on the Charter Review Amendment.
And do we have a second, and then we'll hear, okay?
The amendment specific to the training of city employees?
Training of city employees, yes.
Ms. Selman, did you have anything to say, ma'am?
Yeah, I was just gonna add that if you would like, I think that's good to keep the HR, the sensitivity training piece separate. But if you would like us to do a comprehensive review of the charter changes that were made and to determine whether there's any other action items that need to be implemented, we'd be glad to undertake that.
Great, and she was on there with us.
And I was on the Charter Review Commission, so I think I just volunteered.
So should we pass the first one first and then?
Vote on the first one.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Goode, I believe it was, all in favor? Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Goode's, I believe it was, all in favor? Any opposed?
And that was, that was also the December nineteenth date, is that what you said?
Is that, if that's okay, yeah, and then, um, and then secondly, or second on that part, um, sorry, I'm-
A different motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, different motion, sorry, um, tired here. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, ask legal to give us advice on anything we need to do to implement the amendments of the charter that were approved on May first.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion by Councilman, yes, sir, date, date.
Date, yes, sir. How much time, that might take some, I don't know how much time that would take, Ms. Selman.
Let's do that, can we do that January ninth then?
January ninth?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Escauco, all in favor? Any opposed, anything else sir?
That's it.
Okay, just very briefly, I'm making a, a amended motion, I had motion for a commendation for Hillsborough County, uh, City Planning, uh, Commission for their sixtieth anniversary for commendation, I motioned that be held on November twenty-first, two thousand nineteen.
We have a motion from, uh, Council, Chairman Viera with a second from Councilmember Goode's, all in favor?
Aye.
The subject matter, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Oh, um, and I, I'll, I'll give it over there, the, um, the, um, commendation for the planning commission their sixtieth anniversary. Um, and then just briefly, I guess, Saturday we, we have the, uh, housing. Okay, do you want to speak to that, go ahead. And I was going to say before that, Councilman Goode's, we, we, we should talk about, um, uh, procedure for that, I was talking with Mr. Shelby about it, since this is going to be in your district, uh, the way that I see it is if you want to, uh, procedurally, I mean, I'm, 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 uh, I'm chair of it, if you want to take charge and lead, my friend, it's your district, so, you know.
It's not a matter about, uh, who leads, as long as we're there for the people to get the job done.
Oh, yeah, and I mean in terms of like, I don't, I don't want to call it, uh, emceeing, but in other words, like introducing and, and all that, that's-
Well, we'll do like we know, we'll do what open up, and Shelby will be there, we'll open it up, and then we'll make our introduction, so people can know who we are, why we're here, and then we'll go from there. Uh, I think, uh, I, I'm, I'm, uh, very humbled that the administration did come through, and, uh, things are, are starting to really, really unwind now. Uh, it'll be a young middle magnet school, uh, on, uh, address, is eighteen oh seven East Dr. Martin King Boulevard, uh, right in the heart of East Tampa, nine to one, uh, council will, uh, convene inside of the cafeteria at nine o'clock. Parking for us will be on the east side of the building by the cafeteria. On Twentieth Street, that's correct, and Shelby, that's where we, where we'll park at, uh, the housing department will be having their symposium with, uh, vendors and, uh, they think the East Tampa Partnership, they're doing some stuff too. They're overflowing with vendors, and they had to cut it off, cause everybody now wants to be a part of this housing thing. So, like I said, we're bringing what we have to the people, so there should be no excuses for no one, uh, not to be there who needs housing, or needs information to get us someone, reference to owner rehab, uh, any type of funding, lending, any type of, uh, funding as far as, as a down payment assistance from the city, or the East Tampa Partnership, uh, so there are a lot of things there available, and I'm just hoping that everyone in the community comes out, and hopefully every councilman can make it there on track.
I'm sorry, just, if I can, just to follow up, uh, Councilman Goode's, um, I don't know whether Ms. McLeary just, uh, gave everybody the program or the, uh, for what is coming.
She just, as she was leaving, she was showing, she has, I'm, I'm sure she'll have it too by tomorrow, that's all right with the booklet.
Well, I, 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 I saw a draft of it, and just to let you know, there is an itinerary, uh, timing. Council is scheduled for a one-hour town hall meeting from nine AM to ten AM. Um, the process begins in the gymnasium at nine o'clock as well, so it'll be an overlap of that, but people who want to attend city council's town hall for an hour are certainly glad and willing to do that, um, also, uh, to the council, um, I just want to create a bar on that, but with regard to, uh, okay, we'll come.
Is that all Q and A, or are we talking?
And that's a good question, I, I would think so.
Yeah, just Q and A.
I would think so, and before, and, and Councilman Dingfelder, just one second if I may, uh, is, is there a flyer on this?
Yes, 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 flyer shipped out, yes.
Okay, there.
There is, and, and-
Oh, yeah.
And last week I, I put the notice of that.
I am too, I'm sorry.
But last week I put a notice of that with, the, the public notice with the flyer in council members mailbox, it has been posted. It is a noticed public meeting, I'll be there to take minutes, and, uh, it's going to be from nine to ten o'clock. And then from ten o'clock, the, um, uh, that's the point I wanted to make, the, uh, the, the workshop, the fair, will continue in the gymnasium, and my understanding is that, I haven't seen the program, the final program, but the mayor's going to be there to speak as well, to welcome people in the gymnasium, I believe.
It's at ten thirty, I believe.
Yeah, I have a, um, uh, something in Forest Hills in Nebraska that I have to go to at about eleven, so I can stay for about seventy percent of it. But, uh, Councilman Dingfelder, sir?
Yeah, it looks like, um, my plan is to be there from about nine, nine to eleven, I'll, it sounds like I'll be able to, to hear the mayor speak as well. But my question is in terms of format, so are we sitting at a dais?
The front row stand, there's a table, there'll be eight chairs, Mr. Shelby, you have the eighth chair, we're all the seven.
Okay, and then do we have a, a program that's being presented to us, or that we're presenting to, to the community? Or, or as Mr. Chairman just said a minute ago, is this just, we just sit there and take questions and-
Take questions.
And answer them.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think it'd be, I'll tell you what'd be nice, as a leadoff, if Vanessa's available, is if she, she's given us, you know, sort of a, a twenty, you know, twenty-minute overview on what the city is doing in terms of housing, and the CRA now in terms of housing, maybe she could lead off with that, so we'd have a little bit meat on the bones, and then, uh, and then take questions after that.
Well, I, I did a walkthrough with Vanessa and her staff at, at, uh, the middle school on Tuesday, and I will tell you, I don't know what her schedule is, but boy, she has a lot on her plate, so certainly councilman can ask.
We can ask, we can ask.
But, but I don't know how long she'd be able to spend, because there's a lot of moving parts that are going into this project, it's very impressive.
We can ask her to open the doors, and she can go back and do what she needs to do, I bet she'll fucking do that for us.
Maybe we could do-
Is council good with that?
Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe we could have like a proposed outline where, uh, there's, uh, introduction by the city, forty-five second introduction by each council member, and then we hear from the public, um, but there, there would have to be, um, uh, I mean, I'm just thinking of how I do town halls, there's usually one person with a mic.
We have mics, we have all-
Yeah.
All right, only at least one.
But if we get her for a presentation, I think it would be good for that to precede the questions-
Yes.
From, from the community, otherwise we'll never get there.
She's got a bunch of her staff people there, so I know she's got other people in charge, I met a bunch of them last night, so she's got, everybody from housing will be there.
Councilman, in your office, will you personally be able to take out?
We'll take care of that.
However you want to proceed to make contact with her?
And you know what, we can, yeah, and, and, and in terms of the procedure, I can have Brandon work with Sonya on that in terms of how to, um, uh, run it like a town hall.
That's fine with me.
You know, and that's, and that's fine, but I'm open, so.
That's fine with me?
Yes, sir, councilman.
So, I have to speak briefly at nine o'clock at Al Lopez Park, and then I'm going to be down there, so I will be there, I will be a little bit late, and then I'll stick around, thank you.
And the other thing that I'm going to say at the end of that town hall, and I might as well say it to you, but you, you know it, but the public probably does not, is that the sunshine law does apply, this council does talk about affordable housing, uh, it's something that, uh, would, would be subject to sunshine law. So, after you, uh, end the town hall, and circulate with the public, and talk, you just have to remain conscious, people would like to be able to talk to all of you all at one time about it, it's not to repeat themselves, but unfortunately the law would not allow that, and it's going to be your responsibilities to make sure that you're cognizant of the sunshine law requirements after the town hall is over.
And you know, by the way, one thing, and I was, I was talking about this with Mr. Shelby, not, not to keep us too darn long, which is that, but, that Councilman Goode's, I love this idea, and you know, we, we should consider having, uh, global council, uh, meetings in, in different parts of the city. I'd love to see one for our friends in Seminole Heights, West Tampa, New Tampa, North Tampa, and South Tampa, et cetera, over the next couple of years. I think that's awesome, you know? Yeah, my, my constituents are sick and tired of seeing me, they'd probably like to hear from, you know, and I'm sure everybody's sick of it. But, uh, just a good idea, okay, and, anything else? Yes, sir.
Adam, I'm going to direct your attention to the, uh, calendar, the November seventh calendar, you, your next regular meeting, um, just for purposes of, um, housekeeping matters, um, there's, I, I noticed it this morning, there, the first item is, has an unknown time, so I'm going to ask, it, it's Tampa Bay Water and Swift Bud to make a presentation regarding their plans for a regional water supply for the future. That is a, um, quite a, a large subject, there's no time limit associated with that, I'm wondering if council wants to set a time for that?
And that was Councilman Carlson, how about we do this, um, Councilman, uh, you come up with a proposal for that in terms of time, and, and when, and maybe you want to bring it back to us this evening, can you do that?
I thi- I don't think in any subject ti- uh, presentation should be more than ten minutes each.
Okay.
Nine, so just set a ti- nine o'clock time, or just do it?
So, we do, if we do a half hour total, I think that's plenty.
Let me take a look at the agenda, but just, could, could you do me a favor, remind me, formally bring it tonight, and have the agenda for that day, and I'll take a look at it, but I'm sure that's fine, but just, you know, my, 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 mine's not working right.
And, and also, just a reminder that there are ten staff reports for that day as well, you might-
Boom. Thank you, everybody, and, and yes, ma'am. No, I think that was it, that, that was it, and thank everybody, this, uh, this workshop, we had a lot of ones, this was the one, as the song goes, the one that got away, so, you know, we'll, we'll continue. We have a motion by Councilman Escauco, a second by Councilman Goode's, all in favor? Any opposed? Yes, sir, six PM. That's my name, thank you.